This meeting will be recorded by Citute Community Television in Mr. Griffin and will be posted following the meeting. Public comment will be available by Google Meet. Community members can also email myself, Janice Lindblom, jlyndblom@citute.org with questions. So the first thing I'd like to do is call the meeting to order at 6:02 by roll call. Lindblom, yes. Gates?
Yeah.
Brandolini?
Yes.
Hayes? I can see you saying hey.
Unmute yourself.
Mike, you have to unmute yourself. Go down the bottom. There you go. Hayes?
Hayes, yes.
All right. Long?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there a way to turn the volume up on Chromebook?
Yeah, upper, the upper right next to the power button?
Yeah.
There's a volume.
Oh, I see. There we go. Thank you, Pete.
Yep.
Okay, first, first step in the agenda is acceptance of the minutes. Did everybody have time to look over the minutes and if, are there any questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to update the April 27th minutes referenced. Bill Burkhead has Dr. Burkhead, and I think the title should just be Mr. Bill Burkhead, so I just wanted to make that amendment.
Okay. Any other comments on the minutes? All right.
I'll make a motion as to accept as amended.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, Lindblom, yes. Gates?
Yes.
Brandolini?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Okay. I'll shoot. And the minutes, there were two sets of minutes? Anybody have any questions on the minutes of our Okay, I'll hear a motion?
Yeah, what's the date?
May 4th.
May 4th.
I'll make a motion to accept the May 4th minutes of the school committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Lindblom, yes. Gates?
Yes.
Brandolini?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Okay, and for next up is the Fields Project Update. Mark Novak. Good evening.
Good evening. So thank you for having me. Superintendent Griffin asked me to come before you guys just to give an update as to the status of the construction project out behind the high school. Things are moving along. We're finally hitting the home stretch. You know, obviously it's taking a little bit longer than we had all hoped and anticipated. But considering the times and the challenges that we're facing, I think we're in pretty good shape. And the project should be wrapped up in advance of the fall school year starting. Right now, we're generally complete at the track and field portion of project. The handicap lift is now complete, has been inspected, so we can have the occupancy for the final occupancy for all that portion of the site. The concession building is complete, barring a few punch list items that my architect needs to go out and confirm are completed, and then we'll be handing over keys, product information on different appliances, like the ice machine, the cooler, stuff like that for concessions over to Bob Dillon. So he can have that and keep that. We'll be out there tomorrow doing a general punch list for the track and field portion of the site, so the contractor can take care of the minor items there. And the goal is to formally turn that over, that portion of the site, that is, over to the town on July 1st. The reason being July 1st is because town meeting is being planned on the field for June 27th. And it just didn't make a lot of sense to open up the field for a day or two and then have to shut it back down as they were starting to prep for town meeting. So July 1st, the track and field will hopefully, if everything goes according to plan, be ready for use. I know that a lot of the community has been itching to get out there. It's, it's tough when you have a, looks like it's a completed facility just sitting there unused and people want it to get outside and exercise and and move around. And I thank everyone for, for, you know, feeding the warnings of, not the warnings, but the, the request to stay off the field. I know it's been challenging, but, but it's helped the contractors finish up a few things that they had to do out there. One of the reasons for the delay is obviously the COVID challenges. Not so much with the contractor, they've been diligently working along. But when various subcontractors had to come onto the site, like the turf installer for the baseball field, the contractor just didn't feel comfortable onsite, knowing that, you know, guys from out of state were coming in to work on the field. They had done their proper quarantining. But even so, they, they kind of shut down for a couple of weeks while the turf was being installed. And it's also, COVID is also translated into some material and shipping delays. You know, we've all heard about supply chain issues. It's not just with personal protective equipment, it extends all the way down into the construction industry as well. So they had to deal with some of that. But right now they're over, working very diligently on preparing the softball multipurpose field on the western portion of the site. The concrete anchor for the synthetic turf, so basically the, the edge of the entire field is being installed along with some additional fencing. The goal is that within the next month, that will start to turn green. And that will really be one of the, the final items, barring minor, you know, detail items that we need to have them get completed out there. Hopefully shortly after the track and field is open to the public, the goal is also to open up the baseball field, multipurpose field. So the idea is we'd like to move from east to west in terms of opening up the, the various facilities out there. The challenge with opening up the baseball field at the same time as the track and field is we still need to maintain a secure construction site. You know, the contractor still owns the site. You know, there's been a lot of people, although most people have been listening to recommendations to stay off the site, there's still a decent amount of people that are going out to use the facilities. And it's still a construction, it's very much a construction site. There's trenches in the ground, there's uneven, unstable surfaces. If someone falls, gets hurt, then it's really the contractor's liability there. So we need to get to a point in construction where we can draw a clean line between the softball and the baseball field, where they can erect some new temporary construction fencing to allow for safe separation between use of the field and the ongoing construction project. And that's, that's the short and sweet of it.
It's surprising that there was a delay. I figured, oh, there's no traffic at the high school, the, you know, construct contractors can get right in there and, you know, do what they have to do. You know, I wouldn't think of, you know, the supply
Yeah.
aspect.
Yeah, you know, they, they, it has helped in one sense. Because as you've seen, they've taken over part of the parking lot for staging, for their construction trailer. That has definitely helped. You know, it would have been a madhouse if, if we were in quote unquote, "normal" times. But, you know, they've also seen some staffing challenges, you know. Laborers who just didn't feel comfortable coming into work when it was, when, when COVID was at its peak. You know, as of, I want to say, three, three weeks, four weeks ago, you know, they've had the site fully staffed, but for a while they were, they were definitely on reduced staffing because, you know, they couldn't demand that their guys So, you know, that was a challenge. And also, you know, if we go back to the winter, you know, I believe we had the conversation about the, the unstable soils out there. You know, we had an excellent winter in terms of no snowfall or limited snowfall. But the challenge was that the soils we have out there are silty, we had a decent amount of rain, and we never had a really good, hard freeze. That would have helped them progress much further over the winter. They would have been able to work on a frozen subgrade. Instead, we ended up having freeze and thaw, and freeze and thaw, basically throughout the winter, which ended up creating this three to four inches of pudding that they had to work on. And, you know, in the interest of, this is a significant investment for the town. And multiple conversations with the contractor, with our geotechnical engineer, just didn't feel comfortable recommending proceeding, putting any kind of structural elements on top of that pudding. So we really had to wait for that to, you know, the weather to improve in that sense.
Now, maybe for, for people who are listening and know the town meeting will be held there, are any precautions being taken to protect the track or the fields?
Yes.
Yeah.
So it's, it's the town administrator, Jim Boudreau, Director of DPW, Kevin Cafferty, some of his engineers as well, they've been working out a plan for town meeting. I participated in a sidewalk with them. So it's my understanding that the moderator and select people, select persons, and then various boards like advisory, those will be the only people on the field. We have chairs that I think are being taken from the school that don't have posts that dig down into the turf. The moderator's podium, we're going to make sure that it's, the field's protected with plywood, whatnot. And then all of the public will be socially distanced up in the grandstands.
Yeah. And are there other, like, marking off where people can sit? Yeah.
Yeah, that's my understanding. I know that they were out there last week. I provided them with the drawings for the bleachers, and they were out there figuring out a game plan for that. I think the idea is to basically block off every other row. And then I think when they were setting it up, they were assuming that it would be two people per household in the grandstand.
All right. Great. Very exciting. Anybody in the committee have any questions for Mark?
I have a few. And I guess first would be to Janice. Maybe you could contact Town Hall, Jim Boudreau, to see where they're going to put the school committee at town meeting?
Yeah.
Mark, I think, did you forget that, did they show a place where the school committee was going to be? Was that going to be with the selectmen or?
Yeah, Mike, I, I haven't seen a formal layout, but I would imagine it would be, yes.
Okay, maybe Janice, you could follow up on that.
Sure.
And Mark, what was the original completion date?
The original, final completion date was the beginning of May.
Okay.
So we're, we're definitely off by, you know, a couple, two and a half months.
And, you know, I understand construction is not easy and it's, it's variable and it's been an extraordinary year. But am I correct in saying that you believe that the entire project will be ready by September 1st?
I've told the contractor and very distinctly that if he's still onsite September 1st, then they will never be working for any of my projects again. You know, I, at this point, Mike, I, I don't see any reason why they wouldn't be done by September 1st. And actually, I, I hope that it's, it's earlier in August.
One of the concerns I have is, there's some talk among various sports leagues and, and in the MIAA to flip fall and spring sports, which would mean football in the spring and baseball and softball in the fall. And I'm concerned if that, if that is what's going to happen, that we'll be ready, ready to go on that.
We should be ready to go.
Yeah.
We really should.
Yeah, two other question, I think just two other questions. One was, am I mistaken, or I thought I remembered, with some of the, the trenches that have been dug for electricity and, and other utilities, are those items going to be remain patches, or is the area going to be repaved?
Are you referring to the parking lot of the school?
Yeah.
The condition that it is today is, is the final condition.
Good.
There, there were some patches, there were some porrids, I, I believe. And they came back out and I had them pull it out and they've replaced it to get better drainage and also to achieve accessible standards.
The, because, you know, I've lived in Citute a long time and Citute is notorious for putting patches that turn into trenches in six months. And so that is a concern of mine, and I was under the impression they were going to be repaved, the parking lot, but so be it. My next question, I'm sorry, go ahead.
If I could jump in, sorry, Mike. The one thing that I think we have going for us there is they patched that in the early winter, late fall. And then it was there all winter, and then they've come back and then replaced it in the spring. So if there was any kind of, you know, yeah, you know, frost, you know, heaving or settling, hopefully that, some of that worked itself out over the winter and, and now we're good.
And the main, the main prevention of that is proper compacting, obviously.
Correct.
But out on the heading out towards the grass soccer field from the parking lot, there appears to be a drainage pipe into the woods?
Yes, a flare end section, yes.
Is that going to remain?
It will, yes.
Were there any conservation issues there and ownership? Because I know ownership in that, in certain parts of the western line of this town's property is owned by private parties.
Yeah, great question. That was reviewed and approved by conservation. That's been there since the original design. It was also peer reviewed. So basically, you know, the site, the proposed development of the athletic fields does not increase any kind of runoff to that area. Even though we're putting a pipe out, the amount of water and the rate at which it leaves the athletic field site is not increasing.
And that's all on town property?
Correct.
Okay. Also, in, right at that area, to, to construct that drainage site, the there was a bulletin board that was removed and it's, it's off to the side. Right next to that was a, a a stanchion and a plaque that the grass soccer field was named by the school committee 12 years ago. The Carl Chessier Field. Because he, he was the former, worked for the town and was the tree warden, and he built that field in his spare time. And I didn't see that. So I was wondering if someone could take a look for that.
Yeah, so at the beginning of the project, DPW came out and removed all plaques, monuments from the site, and they supposedly are in safe storage. And last week I actually had a conversation with Kevin Cafferty about a couple of those elements and requesting that they inventory them, bring them up back out to the site so we can start citing them. One of them being the, the reedy rock that was over by the baseball field. I know that there was a plaque over by the old flagpole, not the flagpole, over by the little stone retaining wall in between the ticket booth and the bleachers of the old track and field. There was a plaque over there, so I will definitely check with Kevin on that next time I speak with him.
You know, I can double check with them also too. Thank you. My last question has to do with the parking to the left of the athletic facility entrance. Are those, will those eventually be handicap spots?
To the left of the ticket booth or like facing the, facing the baseball field?
Facing the football field to the left of the
No.
Okay.
No, the, the grades in there are too severe, too severe to be handicap accessible. So all the handicap spaces are now facing the softball field up where, you know, the stone pillars are.
No, I've seen those, yeah.
So that's going to be a run of handicap parking right there.
Okay, and the area I mentioned, that'll be regular parking?
Regular parking, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. One thing I failed to mention, which I'm sure everyone's curious about, is we're on budget. So that, that's good news.
That's recreation's problem, not ours.
So Mark, to follow up on Mike's comments about the handicap spots, so in front of the football field entrance, their, the turf field entrance, so their grading is such that there, it's not possible to have any handicap?
Yeah, it doesn't, it, it doesn't meet the standard. It doesn't meet the standard for an accessible parking area. It's, it's over the, the slope tolerances.
Okay.
And actually, the, the handicap spaces that were there previously were not within standards. So they will be now.
Good.
There's not, never any thought to regrading those spaces, so raising the curb in front of, say, the, where the front of a vehicle would be? Was there any consideration there?
It, there was, but we didn't want to have to do any modifications to the ticket booth. And the walkway through the ticket booth down to the track and field previously was not accessible. It was too steep. So we had to modify all that, and then you start chasing the grades up. And, and, you know, there was just no way to, to get an accessible route to the parking and make that parking handicap accessible. We had to put it up top.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions for Mark?
No, Mark, you still might have done. I was going to ask how we are in terms of budget. How was it that we're still on budget? Just, I mean, if it's going to take an extra four months, I, it's just expenses were less and we're able to draw it out, or it's just all labor?
It, it's basically all labor. You know, and actually, we've, we've added to the project. We've, we've added dugouts at the baseball and softball field, which is a, a nice addition to the project. And, you know, we've done time extensions to the contract. We've recognized that there's been hardships on the contractor. But we said, you know, it's a time extension, but, you know, we don't think it's a, it's a fee extension. It's not a payment increase. And they're agreeable to that.
Okay.
So, you know, I think, I think, you know, there, there's a number of things that we would like to do moving forward as well. You know, storage is always a challenge at athletic facilities. So we're looking at providing some areas where maybe, you know, we do gravel pad or concrete pad where in future, sports organizations can purchase a trailer that's like at the end of the track now, where it's in the Citute colors and it, and it's not a, you know.
U-Haul.
Yeah, it, it doesn't look like it goes on the back of an 18-wheeler, you know, it's not a ConX box. So we're looking into that. There's a few other minor little changes. We've added brand new irrigation system to the backfield. So hopefully that field can start to be rejuvenated. It took a beating last year when football was on it, but it wasn't in very good shape prior to that either. Largely because I don't think that irrigation system really worked. And the, the pitch of the field just was poor, so you know, that, that, that'll help on the backfield. And, you know, I, I think things are slowly starting to shape up out there, and I'm, I'm liking the way things are coming together.
Right.
So you add, so you, the back soccer fields, which, yeah, indeed it was a mess, that had an existing irrigation system that you just kind of fixed? Is that what you're saying?
No, it's brand new, all the way back to the main line. So the existing irrigation system, I suppose, we could have tried to patch it together. But it was so dated that if we kind of patched one area, a year from now, you'd be dealing with issues on another area. So the irrigation system is a completely new head-to-head in-ground system.
So it's replace the old system?
Correct.
Okay, yes. Because we had it
Do you think there'll be enough money in the budget to, leftover money in the budget to, say, aerate and seed that field?
Potentially, potentially. You know, and obviously those decisions are not made by me. Yeah, I think
When the project was presented by recreation, it was hoped that there would be enough money to aerate and reseed that field.
Yeah. And, and, you know, that's definitely on our list. You know, another thing that's on our list is new athletic equipment for the fields. So, you know, the project originally as bid did not include like new soccer goals. It only included permanent athletic equipment, like the field goal posts, the foul poles, backstop, stuff like that. So, you know, we're looking into the possibility of purchasing new soccer goals, new field hockey goals, so we're not having a brand new facility and then these old beat up, you know, equipment on them.
Great.
Okay.
Well, thank you for your hard work, Mark.
No, it's been a pleasure, a lot of hard work by a lot of people. It's truly a team effort and hopefully something that the town gets to enjoy and the school gets to enjoy for, for years to come.
Yes, thank you, Mark, for the update.
All right. Have a good evening, everyone.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is the committee reorg. Reorganization of the school committee.
So Well, I'll take it over from here for just a few minutes. Again, this is part of the committee's annual bylaws to annually reorganize and revoke chairperson, vice chairperson, secretary, and clerk. You have in your backup just a brief summary of the job descriptions as they stand. Certainly the chairperson has the, the greatest responsibility in the group, working with the superintendent to coordinate your weekly, bi-weekly agendas, certainly serving as the communication hub and representative for the school committee and often as well, and coordinating efforts, you know, with the district and the superintendent across a wide range of, of expectations. You can see the list that you have there. And what I'd propose, if it, if it pleases the board, is that we start with the chairperson, have some debates, some dialogues, some discussion, do a vote for that after some nominations, and then go right down, vice chairperson, secretary, and clerk. So if there's no opposition to, to that, I'll open up some just conversation first regarding the chairperson position. And if I could entertain any member of the board who would like to make a nomination, you can certainly nominate yourself, you can nominate someone else as part of the dialogue as well regarding the chairperson. So I'll turn it over to the committee at large for any discussion.
Well, I've had a fantastic year as chair, but I will not be nominating myself. I nominate Peter Gates as the chair. I think heading into the, you know, the financial difficulties we're going to have, I think he'd be a great asset. And he's been part of the ongoing conversation with the, the, you know, the unions about sacrifices that may need to be had and so.
that may need to be had, and so I think he would be great to lead the school committee for the following year.
Is there, is there a second for that mo- that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Brandalini. Any further discussion?
Do I, can I, I would accept the nomination. I would look forward to the challenge and I believe that over the past year specifically, I have a good handle on the environment, the culture, the finances, and all else that's going on in the district and would like to take what I've learned in my experience and move forward into the next year with our new leadership team.
Any other discussion regarding that motion? We have a second on it?
I'll comment on it, just that I think Peter has put in a lot of time. It's not, obviously, as we all know, this is not an easy task for us all to be a part of a school committee. It's a ton of work. I can appreciate that now having one year, one real year under my belt, that there's an enormous learning curve, just a huge responsibility. And I think that Peter is, has learned a lot as vice chair, and I think it's, I think he's do a great job as chair. I think he's ready to take that on. And I really think he, he knows where his areas of growth are and is ready to move forward. And I think one of those things he's good with increased communication and really getting us all kind of more path-oriented.
Any other discussion on the motion? Okay, I'll take a roll call vote on that motion. We'll, I've got sort of an order here if that works for all of you. Limblon?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Brandalini?
Yes.
Hayes?
No.
Long?
Yes.
The motion passes four to one. The next item on the list is the vice chairperson. Again, I'll open up for any general discussion first and then looking for a motion from one of our board members. Same idea, you can certainly make a motion to nominate yourself for vice chairperson or nominate someone else. I'll turn it over to the board at large.
I think, I think it's important to understand what the duties of the vice chair are. In my capacity as a vice chair, last year, I was involved intimately with a lot that was going on as a result of negotiations and so on. And I feel like the secondary role obviously is in the event that I'm not able to participate or run a meeting. Other than that, I'm not really sure what the additional duties are of a vice chair, so I'm not sure it takes on any significant additional responsibility. And I mention that because as we go into the, the next topic, which is subcommittees, it's really something that needs to be considered is what your time commit- commitment can be outside of our regular, you know, twice-a-month meetings. With that being said, I don't think it's in a huge additional time commitment in terms of having the role as vice chair.
I, I think it's one thing to, in my view, to make known is that, I mean, the chairperson and the vice chairperson are, are not a team. And that it's up to, it's the responsibility of the chairperson to delegate and rely upon all the members of the school committee to assist the chairperson in their duties. So I think I'll make that, that one statement.
Do we have a motion to nominate someone for the vice chair position?
I'll nominate Mike Long.
Yeah, the nomination for Mr. Long. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Long nominated as vice chair with a second from Ms. Brandalini. Open up to further discussion.
Is there?
Mr. Long as well.
Is there anyone that would like to be the vice chair?
Well, hang on, Mr. Gates, you can't do that. We've got a, a motion and a second on Mr. Long's nomination, so we'll focus the discussion on that.
I'll talk on that, though. I think that having Peter, you know, as chair, his first time being chair, I think it would be nice, a nice compliment to that, to have one of the two Mikes as a vice chair, just as. And I know Mike Hayes is saying, you know, that, that's not a team, and I can understand that absolutely. But also having that person as vice chair, I think that both of you bring a lot of experience to the committee. So having one of you as, you know, that next person in line is a good thing with the changes that are coming this fall.
And did, did Mike accept the nomination?
He hasn't made any comments yet. I can't see him on my screen here, so I might have missed.
I can't see him either.
Me either.
I can see his phone.
I would, I would accept it. I, I agree with Nicole. I think having some balance in terms of, I know Peter's business is going into his fourth year, having some experience to help out where needed, especially with the new administration, would definitely be something that might be beneficial. And I think between the chair, the vice chair, and probably the different subcommittees, just making sure that we have a little bit more information being shared out. It's part of the subcommittee or information coming out of the committee, part of the agenda, and maybe trying to run that and making sure that we're all on the same page of everything going on. Especially with everything going on inside and outside of the school, we're definitely benefit not only the committee as they make decisions, but also with the entire community as they either read our minutes or watch the meetings as they're going.
Yeah, I agree with that, especially in this COVID year with information changing every few days. So communication, top priority.
I agree.
Okay, well said. Any other debate discussion regarding the motion for Mr. Long as vice chairperson? Okay, we'll take a roll call vote, please. Limblon?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Brandalini?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
And Long?
Yeah.
Motion passes five oh. Mr. Long is the vice chairperson for next year. Our next item is the secretary position. Again, you can see from your policy, the secretary's role is typically sign the minutes, diplomas, take the minutes in the event. Your clerk in this case, Ms. Mullin, is not available for you. Again, I'll open it up to the committee at large for any discussion and then entertain a motion for nominating a secretary for next year.
I guess it's gonna be the first person who does not say no thanks. And I'm gonna say no thanks.
Well, I guess.
I'm gonna nominate Janice.
Yeah.
Since the COVID hit this year, I nominate Janice Limblom as secretary of the school committee.
Very good.
It'll be a nice, uh, nice, nice step down from this year's work.
It'll be very nice, yes, thank you.
I'll second that.
If it, yeah.
Seconded by Mr. Hayes for Ms. Limblom as secretary. Any further discussion?
I think Janice would be a great chair. I mean, a great, a great, a great. Great secretary.
Any other discussion? Great, we'll do a roll call, please. Ms. Limblon?
Yes.
Mr. Gates?
Yes.
Ms. Brandalini?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
And Mr. Long, please.
Yeah.
Very good, five oh, the motion passes. Ms. Limblon, the secretary for this upcoming year's school committee. And finally, we have the clerk. Again, same process, right? Open up for discussion as the group sees fit, and then I'd entertain a motion to nominate one of the members as clerk.
Uh, will I nominate Jeannie Mullen?
Cannot nominate Jeannie Mullen as the clerk. The clerk is a formal position of your school committee.
It says in the, the backup, because it has recommended the school committee vote to a point, and in parentheses, it says Jeannie Mullen. That's why I said that.
I believe you have a clerk for your committee on your bylaws who serves, you know, if Jeannie is not there, certainly. And you can, obviously, hire Jeannie each year, and I do believe you have a, a position in your committee that's an elected position. I can, we can put a pause on that and double check.
Yeah, because I don't, I don't think we've had a clerk.
No.
Okay.
No.
All right, very good. Nomination of Ms. Mullen. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Long. Any other discussion?
Well, why don't we just make that tentative pending review of the town bylaws to see if we need to have a member be that position?
Yeah.
I'll just double check that. I, I could be, certainly could be wrong about it, for sure. So we can make the motion qualified by just a double check of your bylaws, for sure. Any other discussion? Brilliant. Roll call vote. Slim Blom?
Yes.
Mr. Gates?
Yes.
Ms. Brandalini?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
And Mr. Long?
Yeah.
Five oh pass. I'll get right back to you guys. I'll check that first thing in the morning and just send a quick email, just to clarify. Otherwise, we'll turn the meeting over to Mr. Gates.
All right, great. Thank you, Ron. Thank you all for the nomination and appointment to chair. As Nicole said, obviously, I have some strengths, have some weaknesses. One that I'm gonna grow on is taking control of the meeting, and I will grow with each meeting that, that I continue to lead. We'll s- uh, have a more formal presentation, I guess, in the next couple of meetings, just to review a couple of things that I want to address and inform the public of and hopefully discuss with the committee. But our current, um, next order of events is the representatives in terms of town liaison positions. I know that every year, we, we probably spend a lot of time discussing these. Just want to make one comment before we, we, we review each of them. I think that this is most often required when we have a new school committee member elected to our team. But we're the same committee as we were last year. So unless folks see otherwise, just kind of throwing it out there for discussions, is there any reason to make any of these changes, or does anyone want to change, or they want to maintain their current roles?
I don't mind remaining the liaison to the selectmen, but I think last year, Mike Hayes had mentioned that that's usually the chair.
Correct. So that, so with a couple of exceptions, so that would be one exception. I would assume, I would assume that liaison position. But are there any other reasons to change around? And we can just discuss that right now. Otherwise, we can do our usual thing and go through it and figure out who wants to do what.
I'm, I'm okay with, I mean, that would.
The only thing I'd like to do is, I'd like to be on the high school, I think, rather than the Wamper Tech.
Okay, yeah, Mike, we'll go through, those are subcommittees. We're just gonna go through the liaison positions first. So advisory, selectmen, financial forecast, public building, planning board, capital plan, rec, master plan, and sister city.
Okay.
All right. Mr. Gates, if I could interject for a moment, one you may want to add to your list that you don't have every single year would be negotiations subcommittee as well with your, as you look at subcommittees going forward, too. So that may be something to, to add to the list. I don't know if I saw it here.
I see, I do see it on, I do see it.
You have it on there? Okay.
Well, it's under collective bargaining.
Right, thank you.
Yeah. So again, I don't want to spend too much time. If there's something you want to do that you weren't able to participate next year, let me know. Otherwise, we'll remain with the exception of me replacing Janice, so.
Why don't you run through them, Pete, if you don't mind?
Okay, so advisory committee would be me. Selectmen liaison would be me. Financial forecast, originally, Mike, it was you, and then I was voted in. I think we just have one member, so if you wanted to do that.
Yeah, and again, I, the only reason I couldn't do it was spent most of the winter in the hospital, so.
Yeah, no, I just, but, but both of our names were there, so I just wanted to differentiate that, so.
Yeah, that's fine.
Public building is Janice. Planning board, Mike, you'd be on the planning board liaison.
Sure.
And then Mike and Nicole were both on the capital plan.
Yep.
Recreation commission is Mike Long and Nicole. Master plan advisory is Janice. Sister city is Mike Long, and charter review was Nicole.
Peter, would you be interested in swapping the selectmen and advisory?
Sure, if you want to do advisory. And again, this is my discussion. Each of these has a different time commitment. The advisor, I went to one meeting. I don't, again, every year I say, I'm not really sure our roles in all of these committees, with the exception of capital and financial forecast. Those are kind of meetings that happen regularly. So, yeah, it's fine.
Okay.
And we're, we're one vote on all of these committees, so, you know, it's pretty much a whatever.
Yeah, so I'll just read through them again and confirm the names, and then we'll just do a vote to, to confirm the nominations, all right? So Janice, you'll be, and Jeannie, could you write this down? So advisory will be Janice, selectmen will be myself, financial forecast will be Mike Hayes, public building will be Janice, planning board will be Mike Hayes, capital plan will be Mike Hayes and Nicole, recreation commission, Mike Long and Nicole, master plan advisory, Janice, sister city, Mike Long, and charter review, Nicole. Can, I guess, could I have a motion?
I move.
Motion to appoint, you go, Mike.
I move to appoint the position to the different town liaison positions as presented for the 2020, 2021 year.
I'll second.
Second by Mike Hayes. Do a roll call. I'm gonna, this is something I was thinking about. We're gonna do alphabetically, so hopefully I don't mess that up by last name. So Nicole?
Yes.
Gates, yes. Hayes?
Yes.
Limblon?
Yes.
Long?
Yeah.
Unanimously, Janice, sorry, Jeannie, if you could just confirm those, so we have them in writing, because I did not write them down. That's why we have her. She's so good at it. That's why we wanted to add her again for this year. Uh, now the subcommittees, Mike, I think this is what you're referring to. There are.
Okay.
Peter, before you do that, there's a separate line for the warrant signer and backup.
Oh, yeah.
Above the subcommittee.
Um, I don't see that, Mike.
In the, the blue bag that Kim sent us?
Yeah. Typically, Mr. Gates, we have one, sometimes two people who would be able to sign that warrant. Mr. Donlin, do you want to talk a little about the value and importance of that role?
You're muted at this moment, Paul.
Yeah, I am.
There we go.
As, as you remember, well, when Mike was sick, Peter took over. And it is so important for us to be able to pay those warrants on a weekly basis, if not twice a week, I mean, twice a, at least twice a month, to get our smaller vendors paid. And we're continually moving that, those warrants. And so it's really, and it's part of Governor, I think it was Governor Baker, when he, when he changed the way warrants are being signed. I mean, we'll, once we get back together again, you know, we'll bring warrants to the meeting. And three of yous have to sign it, but in the meantime, in between meetings, and now that we're in this, I don't know what this is called right now, COVID. I don't know what this is called right now, COVID, so we need one person to sign, and we usually have a backup. And it was Mike was the signer, and Peter was the backup, and then when Mike took sick, Peter took over for that, so. We need somebody that can come in and sign or remotely sign.
Yeah, so, sorry, I do see that in the back end now. Sorry, I missed that. I have served for the last couple of months as the alternate signer, and it's actually pretty easy. You just, you can sign it remotely. You don't have to go in and do it. I do it right on my phone, just sign under the school committee members line item. You just sign it and approve. It's pretty straightforward. It doesn't take up that much time. Does anyone have any interests?
Yeah, I'll be one.
I do.
I'll be a backup.
Okay.
So do I have a motion or discussion? Do you want to make another point?
I move that we appoint Mike Hayes as the warrant signer and Janice Limblong as the backup signer for the 2020-21 square.
Second.
Second by Mike Hayes. Vote by roll call. Brandalini?
Yes.
Gates, yes. Hayes?
Yes.
Limblong?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Unanimous pass. Congratulations, Mike. All right, moving on to the subcommittees. Again, I want to do this as efficiently as possible. I know in the past, we spent probably a lot of time talking about it. Just wanted to note, there's a couple of additions, as Ron stated. There's going to need to be a collective bargaining contact or liaison, or maybe two. In addition to a new diversity, equity, and inclusion role as well. So let me run through each of them, just to confirm who the current representatives are, and then we can talk about if we wanted to change them. So the new position, diversity, equity, and inclusion. SEF, that was me. It was minimal time commitment. Finance was Mike Hayes and myself. Technology, ironically, was Mike Hayes.
Yeah, I'm the one that had the bum iPad. Didn't do me much good.
There was an old one that doesn't, that wasn't in existence regarding school start times. I don't think we need to continue that for next year. We can, if you would like, collective bargaining.
What about the elementary? Remember, there was, and Ron, maybe you can speak to this. Would that be included in that list that had that sort of problem with this thing? That elementary start time subcommittee?
Nicole, I'm hearing every other word for you. Can you say it again?
What about that elementary start time subcommittee? Is that, should that be included? Is that something? I think there wasn't even any meetings. I think we ended up involving in this thing.
With the curve ball and COVID, there was no further sort of work toward that. It's really up to the will of the committee. If you'd like to have a start times subcommittee, you can convene that group holistically, focusing on one particular aspect of the district, really would be the will of the committee on that.
I just think we get a lot of parent, I think it's something that's on parent teachers' radar, so I think we should put it on there.
Okay.
When it gets mean, I don't know, but I think it's important.
I think a better commit, committee would be something to do with what the start of school would look like. You know, I think start times, I mean, we don't even know if we're going to be even starting in school, so. I mean, I know it's definitely an interest in the community, but.
I think there is discussion that there's going to be a, I always call it a task force, that's going to look at that in its entirety. I don't know if we need to vote on that right here. But we can certainly add the start times as another subcommittee, and if we use it, we can use it. But I think that there are going to be larger issues to discuss, and I think will initially, initially be addressed by this go-back-to-school tax, task force.
Right.
Yeah, I think we should stick with working on how school, how school will start, never mind what time. We can always do that at a later date.
I totally agree. I just want us to know that that's something that I think comes up all the time still.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. All right, so the next, the next subcommittee is policy, where Nicole and Mike were the representatives. Sick leave bank was Janice and Mike Hayes. School building commission, Janice and Mike Hayes. Pre-K through, pre-K through five grade configure was dissolved. Sorry. Lost my page. And then we had stipend positions were Mike Long and myself. Would anyone, is there, I guess, open for discussions, anything that anyone particularly wants to do? Again, our committee is exact, is constructed with the same people, so I don't see any real reason to change it, unless there's something that you'd like to do.
I'd actually like to do the diversity, equity, stay on policy and do collective bargaining.
Would I, Mike? I'd like to do both as well, Pete.
Yeah, dang.
Wait, okay. Well, we can have, we can have up to two reps on each committee.
Well, I have a question about the, maybe an easier question to answer, is the sick leave bank and the school building committee, maybe Mike Hayes can answer that. If, if those require the chair to be on those? I mean, I'm on both of them. I honestly don't remember last year, if I, it was because I was the chair, or if it's just I offered.
Well, the last time I was chairman, which was when we began the discussion of the Newgate School. I was on that for that reason.
Right.
So, I mean, Pete, if you want to take my spot or Janice's spot?
Yeah, I mean, how, you guys have been last year?
You don't need the chair to be on that committee. You just need two members of the school committee to be there. And I think only one needs to vote. You just seem to have a majority, right, Ron? You don't need both to be at every meeting.
That's correct. Okay, all right, that's, that's all I needed to, I mean, because I'm fine with staying on those two. I don't mind.
And, I mean, there's really only one issue left, correct, Ron? I mean, it's the, it's the big one, that it's in the hands of the lawyers, so.
Yeah.
It's going to be minimal.
Can I just interject one second there?
Yeah.
If, if we do get selected, you do have to have the chairman, the chairperson has to sign a bunch of stuff for the school building committee. So if we get selected in December, it has to be, you know, Peter would be the chairperson. He would have to sign a bunch of things. You know, for right then. He had to be on the committee, he had to be on the website, so.
Okay. Yeah, I can take over that role. So again, let's just go through it. So diversity and inclusion, we have everyone that wants to.
Yeah.
I'll make a comment that whether it means anything to anyone else, but it means a lot to me. For the last 16 years, I've been working with the Allies Not Bystanders student group. I was one of the, I can't call myself a founding member. I was a founding sounding board for the person who actually formed that committee, Julie Hickey. But I have worked with that, that group for over 16 years, and it's been instrumental in doing just what it says, that students are allies, not bystanders, so that people in the high school and in the school system don't suffer in silence from racial discrimination, bullying, gay, transgender issues, all those types of issues. So as we move to a new phase, I'd very much like to be, remain part of that. The Allies Not Bystanders, actually, in the last two years, is now completely student-run. And is a model for many, many school systems. And we were just about the first to, to bring about a, a school group in that regard. And Julie Hickey deserves all the praise, but I was there from the beginning as well, so. I'd like to remain there.
Ron, Ron, can you provide a little bit of background on this particular committee, exactly what you anticipate the, the role to be? And how will be implemented or integrated into the district?
Yeah, Mr. Gates, the role is really whatever the committee would like it to be, but I think the intention is simply that this is an issue that country is facing, the Commonwealth is facing, situat is facing, and we should be proactive to set a group at the district level to look at policies of our school district, to look at the way in which our district thinks about and coordinates our efforts for diversity, inclusion, equity. I spoke with Bill Burkhead, the new superintendent, coming on board soon, and he's excited about this, this kind of work as well. Spoke with our colleagues over at Situate Police Department. Chief Thompson, we'll be Chief Thompson. They would love to have a seat and a voice as part of this conversation, too. So the scope of the work really would be up to the committee, and that's the beauty of a subcommittee. But I thought it would be a good first step that this committee establish a subcommittee to have these conversations and to guide whatever work Situate sees as necessary going forward in diversity, equity, and inclusion.
Further discussion on, on whether or not we can have two representatives on this particular committee due to the importance and the level of interest from all of us?
If you're asking, I'm sorry, if you're asking, you can have two people on any, any subcommittee.
I'm asking the school committee members. I mean, there's a, this is a really important issue, obviously, and there's a dramatic amount of interest. I'd like everyone to be able to participate in whatever they would like to do, but obviously, we're limited to our level of involvement. Do we think that two folks could appropriately serve on this subcommittee?
Oh, I do.
I think so, yeah.
Anyway, so I can do it.
You can have sick leave bank. I would love to be on this committee. I mean, my background is social work, so this is right, you know, this is what I do.
All right, Janice, I'll yield it to you. You can have it over me. And I agree, I think Mike would be a good person to have on there because of his past involvement in the community.
All right, so now Nicole and I have to fight over it? All right, well, I guess I'll nominate Mike Hayes to the diversity. Do we nominate, or just go ahead and appoint?
Yeah, I think.
Normally, we just come to a consensus, but. Some.
So Mike will be one of, we'll take a vote at the end, but Mike will be one of the two, and, you know, between Janice and Nicole, I would just probably look at your time commitments and other subcommittees and so on, and see, you know, this is probably going to be a really big time commitment. I think both of you would bring, obviously, great perspectives to it. I mean, I, I won't be able to choose between the two of you.
Has any, anybody else have any other interests about the collective bargaining? Because that's, I mean, that's another.
Well, I think you should look at, as Pete says, with the time commitment, you need to look at the other committees and decide between the two of you, who do you think has the most time? Especially in conjunction with other subcommittees you might want to be on.
And that particular one, I'm guessing, may meet during the day. I'm guessing. I don't, I don't know. I don't really have any basis. I'm just kind of anticipating that. I don't really know.
Nicole, you really want to be on that?
I would like to.
Do you want to trade policy for that?
Sure.
All right.
So it would be Mike, it would be, so we would put Mike and Nicole in the diversity, equity, and inclusion subcommittee. S, oh, God, SEF. I'll remain, again, there's minimal time commitment. Those folks are great. I would like to continue that. Finance, Mike, you and I, Mike Hayes?
Sure, unless Mike Long wants it.
You can keep it if you want to, Mike, because you're on the yeah, the.
Yeah.
I think it makes sense to keep you there.
Okay, too. I mean, that's, those two work hand in hand. I would agree. Again, I have to laugh, technology is Mike Hayes. Does anyone, Mike, do you want to continue that?
Well, I mean, there has yet to be any type of meeting of the technology subcommittee, so I'd be happy to keep it.
Maybe we'll have to change that. I'll make a, I'll call Rich. Okay. School start times, do we, are we going to keep that, or?
I think so.
Well, we voted last.
I think last year, we voted to dissolve it, yeah, last year.
Last year. Why don't we do this? Why don't we just not vote it today and, and if it becomes an issue worthy of discussion, we'll bring it up and vote a liaison.
Yeah.
I think, like you said, it's a bigger issue. It's not just school start times. It's how does school operate?
Right.
At least for the next year. So I think that one of us will be appointed to that when, you know, come early July.
See that perspective. Don't you wish we could just go back to working out the school start time?
Yeah.
That was our biggest problem.
Yep. All right, collective bargaining, I guess, Mike Hayes and I, I'm sorry, Mike Long and I?
Well, it's up to you, Pete, but, I mean, I'd like to negotiate again. I've done it a number of times with.
Is it, sorry, Mike Long, you express interest as well?
But if, I know Mike Long wants it. But that doesn't have to be the chairperson.
Yeah, I know that is a big time commitment coming, and probably in January, and then going through at least a couple of months.
I think it's important for other people that haven't had experience. I mean, I don't want to be on the collective bargaining. I mean, I do at some point, but I mean, I think, you know, I know, Mike and Mike, you've had the experience, but maybe with Peter, you know, who hasn't had the experience. I mean, we should get our feet wet, so to speak.
My opinion is just the opposite. Especially going into our next contract in the COVID age, but again.
No, I mean, like if Peter was.
Yeah, I think that whereas the two Mikes have been through this before, they are more experienced, yes.
Yes.
It's not necessarily creating bench strength, so we look forward to the next contract negotiations in three years. Theoretically, we can have a school committee with zero collective bargaining experience.
Right.
Right? I have no, I mean, I would be interested in doing it. I just, I just automatically assumed that was a function of the chair, but I'm if, if both of you have interest in doing it.
Well, I'll yield to Mike Long certainly on it. And I guess if you want it, Pete, you know, you can, you can, you can have it, but again, I don't think it's necessarily a function of the chair, and I do think experience and past relationships with the bargaining units mean a lot, so.
Okay.
But if, if you want it, you have the chairman, you can take it.
No, that's not how I roll, Mike. I want, I want to make sure you guys are involved. I don't, I don't need to do it. Again, I just assumed that it was a role. I don't have any experience, but I'm not going to do it if I don't ever get that experience.
Right. Right, and it's not like this is something that comes along every, you know, every year.
Right, so theoretically in three years, we have to negotiate again, we could have five members of the school committee, assuming, that's assuming that.
Yeah, I know.
None of us are here or whatever, no one's going to have experience, but it's fine. I'll be willing to let the Mikes be on the collective bargaining, I'm, I'm good.
You take it, Pete.
No, I'm good.
Okay.
I'm good.
In that case, do you want it, Janice, and if you want, express some interest?
Yeah, I'll do it.
I know there were a lot of meetings during the day, and it got, it got pretty intensive at one point. I mean, really, we probably should have had this last year as well, this shouldn't be something that we do every three years, just because of all the memorandums and everything going around anyways. But, um, I mean, there's definitely work to do every year, so I don't think it necessarily is something that is a once every three years type approach.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's important for like more than two commit, committee members to have experience with collective bargaining, I mean.
Well, I know you did a lot this year as chair too, so.
I did, yeah. But I have till January.
So how do we want to, how do we want to move forward with this? I have no issue with the two Mikes.
Why don't you take that, Mike?
Okay.
Well, there's going to be two members, correct?
Yeah, so it'll be me and, me and Mike. Mike Long.
All right, is, again, as long as it's not traditionally the, the chair, again, I don't want to take it from, from, from either of you, that's fine.
It's not.
Okay.
None of these, none of these have to be the chair, Peter.
Okay, all right, so Mike Long.
I'm sorry, except for the school building committee.
Right, okay, so Mike Long and Janice would be the, um, collective bargaining appointees. Um, policy was Nicole and Mike, it's going to be?
Janice and me and Mike Long, if he still wants to be on there.
Yeah, we didn't meet much this year, and I haven't done it before and agreed to that, so I'd like to do it, at least try to do it again, unless someone else wants it.
So policy will be, uh, Mike and Janice, Genie, you're writing this all down, right? Uh, sick leave was Janice and Mike Hayes?
Yes, I have no problem continuing that either.
Okay, I don't really have many roles here, just letting you know, that's fine. Um, so I'll, the school building will be myself and, uh, either Janice or Mike, or anyone else who wants to do it.
Well, I think Mike Hayes should stay on it, cause he's been on it from the beginning.
Okay, so it'll be myself and Mike Hayes on the school building committee.
And there's not left, much left to do unless we get picked.
New one, right.
The new one, and.
Yep.
Be much to do for the immediate future on that.
Yep, uh, or Mike Long and myself, and that kind of came to a, I don't know, I guess an abrupt halt or, or whatnot, I wasn't able to attend the earlier meetings this past year, I'd like to stay on that for next year. Uh, and I was on it with Mike Long.
Would that just roll under collective bargaining, since we have that filled this year?
Probably.
Wouldn't it all be one of the same thing?
Yep, okay, so that will, so we'll just keep that and we'll put, uh, Janice and Mike Long. All right, um, let's.
You want to vote on those?
Yeah, we'll just vote on those, um, do I have a motion?
I'll move that we appoint as, uh, as, as presented and agreed.
Uh, Genie, again, you have those noted, right?
Yeah.
All right. All right, second by Janice, uh, vote by roll call, uh, Branelini?
Yes.
Gates, yes, Hayes?
Yes.
Limblom?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
All right, motion passes unanimously. Now, moving on to school councils, I know, Mike, you had expressed interest, let me go through the current, uh, organization. Mike, you, Mike Hayes, you were, you were high, high school, I was the Gate School, Nicole had Cushing and Hathley, Mike Long had Jenkins, and Janice, you were Wampanoag. Um, again, I think each school council runs very differently. Um, generally, there should be a monthly meeting, I don't know if that is the norm for all the schools. Um, but the commitment, the commitment's real, um, and I think that each of us should probably, um, be on those schools that they either have a hand in or an affinity to, I would say. Um, so with that being said, I'd like to stay at the, the Gate School.
I'm okay with staying at Wampanoag unless somebody else wants it.
I'll stay Cushing, and I, I'll stay at Cushing and Hathley unless anybody wants to.
Mike Hayes, what did you express interest in?
Uh, unless someone else is interested in it, uh, the high school.
Oh, you got it, you were, do you know who you're on this year?
I didn't think I was on any this year, actually.
Yeah, you're on the high school council.
Okay.
So you're on it again.
Well, ask them to invite me to meetings this year.
Okay, and Mike Long, you are Jenkins, you want, can you stay there?
Sure.
All right, so let me re, redo it again for Genie, high school with Mike Hayes, Gate School, me, uh, Cushing School, Nicole, Hathley, Nicole, Jenkins, Mike Long, and Wampanoag, Janice. Uh, can I have a motion?
Move is presented.
There a second? Second by Mike, roll call, uh, Branelini?
Yes.
Gates, yes, Hayes?
Yes.
Limblom?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Passes unanimously, congratulations on your roles. Um, all right, any other questions in relation to subcommittees or liaisons? All right, uh, next item on the agenda is the leadership report, Ron?
Great, thank you, uh, I'll be brief in the interest of time. Well, the only thing we really usually highlight this time of year is our graduates. That's the, you know, ultimate effort that we all put in for, for kids. Uh, we have 226 graduates that went out into the world this year. Uh, if you have a chance, the situation, just put out their publication in your backup, I have their destinations for you as well. Uh, it's a wide range of destinations after S H S, um, it's unique to every kiddo. So everything from apprenticeships in trade schools, uh, joining the workforce, joining military, maritime, uh, some of our local institutions, Northeastern UMass, Worcester Polytech, destinations more far, far field, uh, Penn State V Tech, Cornell, Wake Forest, Washington State, UCLA. Um, you know, we talked a little bit about this idea of like crew and, and our mission and whether you, uh, teach preschool or drive the bus or make food or, uh, teach calculus or principle of a school. I mean, all of our focus really is to help kids go out into the world and become great adults. And so you've got that summary there for you. Um, it's, it's really a celebration for our entire community. I shared it out in my weekly newsletter to the community as well. And, uh, one of those things that while we weren't able to formally have a in-person graduation, I think our community as a whole celebrates, um, successes of our kids collectively. Uh, other items for your leadership report, you know, you're going to probably be getting a lot more information coming up in the next couple of weeks, both from legislative, legislative perspective and from DESI, so not a whole lot there. The only other thing I would share with you is just a brief, um, parent caregiver survey that our guidance team put out to our, our families of graduates, really just getting a sense of what the impact of COVID-19 has had uh, on their plans, on their future, on, you know, what they want to do for, for the upcoming year. We've got that included in your backup as well, you can see for just about 82% of our graduates, uh, plans haven't changed, although we do have some graduates that have done, you know, college deferment, uh, some graduates looking for different ways to, to finance, uh, and some, but some of our graduates thinking about, you know, second and third options. That's your leadership report, I'll open up to any questions if you have them.
Nope, I'm good.
I wanted to, um, I know, like a few months ago, there was, I've, uh, heard some comments about, not, I don't think it was on, at a meeting, that, um, none of the graduates got into Ivy League schools, but, you know, having a senior, he's, you know, updates me of where the kids are going, like so-and-so is going to this college, so-and-so is going to this college. And they're really good schools that these kids are getting into, they may not be Ivy League, but, you know, like UCLA, UCLA, the Worcester Polytech, um, you know, Cornell, I mean, they're great schools that I, I think is fantastic, so I just wanted to add that.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, I think to me, the important thing is, are we getting our kids ready to go to the school that they want? And if, I mean, because of the way that we have so many, um, EP classes offered and so many extracurriculars, our kids are given every chance to succeed, and as long as we're able to do that across the board and get our students ready to go to any school that they want to, um, I think that's the biggest thing. And I, I haven't heard a kid ever say, well, I couldn't, I didn't have the ability to do what I needed to, to get into Harvard or Yale. Um, and I think that's an important testament to, um, where our kids are going. I mean, I didn't see Suffolk University, that was a, a great school, I'll plug them, um, that's where I got my degree. But, um, I, I agree with Janice, there are some great schools in this list.
Yeah.
I'll just add one other thing about just destinations after, you know, high school graduation. One of the things that I think our team is really proud of is that we just try to make sure that we help kids go where they want to go. And if it's getting a student to prepare for the military, and if it's getting a student to take over the family business, um, I think oftentimes we focus only on colleges, which is super important, for sure. Uh, and I saw one of the notes here, Cornell is an Ivy League school, so I think that.
Yeah.
But I think it's about making sure that we, you know, differentiate and we cater to what each kid and family needs and what that student's pathway is. Um, so I'm, I'm proud of the team, the team's effort, and again, you know, we talk about the pathway to high school, graduation doesn't start in high school, it starts in preschool and through elementary. And, um, there are dozens of staff members who contribute to, uh, helping a student along that path and, and along with their families. Wherever their path may take them, our goal is to try to help them get there, so.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is new business. Um, Ron, I just wanted to see that, um, it says here, resolution to the state of mass on the impact of reopening schools in the fall and that, that school committee at large. Uh, if you're looking for our, uh, resolution, I would propose to the committee that we move it, um, just because it goes hand in hand with your, uh, nine B, which is the projected impact on FY21 budget, does that? Would that be a pro, I think it's thinking would make more sense once you discuss the, the budget impacts and why we're recommending that we move forward with this. Um, essentially what this agenda item is, is it's, and I'll, we can go over it once we get to it, but I think it will make much more sense, uh, after Ron gives his, uh, update on the finance side of it. Um, I don't know, do I need a motion to, uh, move this item to, uh, old business, nine B?
All right, I make a motion to move, um, the school committee resolution on, to old business to coincide with the update on the financial effect of COVID-19.
Is there a second? Let's do a roll call, uh, Branelini?
Yes.
Gates, yes, Hayes?
Yes.
Limblom?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda is extended summer year services update by Diana Mullin, Director of Special Education.
Hi, thank you. Um, so we've had to, um, go back and forth on trying to figure out the state's guidance, DESI's guidance, and Department of Public Health guidance, along with our local, um, Department of Health. In a meeting with all of them listening for the guidance, we, I had to unfortunately make the decision to keep our school programming for special needs students as virtual. But I do want to say that further guidance is coming out from DESI in the next week or two, maybe this week, maybe next week, not sure, and further guidance from our commissioner as well as the governor. If we are able to meet all of the health guidelines, I would recommend that moving forward, even midstream, that the, um, the next Director of Special Education make determinations that if the schools are ready to be opened, that we can bring in some students over the summer to do some, um, live programming. But we're going to start out virtually. I do, did want to leave that door open, but, you know, in talking with all the people that I listed in my memo, I'm not sure even, you know, we don't even have the P P Es yet onsite to do, to, you know, have that mass amount of people. Um, Kelly Roach, our nurse leader as well, so I took the guidance of our health leaders, state, town, and district, as well as our, um, government, and made this determination. And I know it's not the determination we wanted, and certainly none of the teachers wanted it either. So I just want to, um, reach out to all the families and let them know that we absolutely want to be working with your children live and would hope that there's a future for that coming up and, and maybe we can get some of that to happen this summer. It just depends on if we can be ready and meet all the health requirements. Any questions on the decision that had to be made?
So Diana, just, and, um, so you're staffing for distance learning, correct?
Correct.
And if, if we go to some sort of hybrid model, the staff will be able to handle both the remote learning as well as the onsite learning?
So, um, I've hired for the remote learning, and if there's some, um, lives in buildings, then the staffing configuration is going to need to change a little bit. Um, if there's a hybrid of, uh, live and, um, virtual, that we'd have to look at the staffing. I think that potentially there's enough staffing, but it, it just depends on which groups we can bring back to go live. I know that the district has given us, not the district, sorry, DESI gave us guidance that to look at first our highest need students to come back live. Um, and so depending on which groups can come back, if at all, then you'd have to look at the current staffing. I think that if you're looking at the self-contained programs, the highest need programs, you have the staffing in place, virtual and live. Um, if we're talking about just the tutoring, that's something that would have to be relooked at for staffing. Does that make sense?
Yep, yep. Uh, any, any other questions?
Diana, have you started talking to some of the parents of the students that would be, um, in these programs? And just what their initial feedback is on, you know, if they still want their kids to do the remote, uh, programming?
Yeah, we've, we've gotten a lot of, not a lot, we've gotten some feedback from families of all different, um, students, all different programs, um, of the over hundred-plus students for summer programming. We have only six parents opting out of the virtual E S Y. Um, I mean, not everybody's thrilled with it, but they're still going to do it. So, uh, we don't have a high opt-out rate currently.
Okay, no, that's good to hear, and I'm glad that if, you know, we can meet the guidelines, that we can still do this.
Right, I tried to be able to leave that door open, I didn't want it to just be a black and white response. I think that we should be able to be flexible as, and you know, as we, as the guidelines come out.
And Diane, as presented, is there any, uh, effect on current staff?
Meaning, I mean, the staffing is the same, if that's.
That's my question, yeah.
No, I, I mean, um, there was, so there was, there, for the most part, staffing was the same, for paraprofessionals, self-paraprofessionals, there were, uh, it was, there were no positions, it was teacher positions for the virtual. That would have been para-positions, but we needed them for the virtual to be teacher positions because of the way it's been going over the school year. Um, so, so then I would say, yes, there was some impact, people who would have.
I think Denise is asking, is that impact any permanent roles and positions, and it doesn't?
No, 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 permanent roles and positions, even like coaching positions, they get posted annually, they get filled annually, based entirely on need. Okay, thank you, no.
Yeah, I mean, I was especially concerned as to whether any paraprofessionals were losing their job.
No, nobody's losing a job that I'm aware of, we've not, we've never, we've not posted anybody to be non-renewed or anything like that.
Great, thank you, I mean, it's not obviously what we'd like to do, but.
Right.
It's the new world for.
it's the new world for, for now.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Diana. Uh, next item are non-union salaries. Ron?
In front of you, annual non-union salaries. Typically, we use, you got your full list of non-union positions with a rollover of your poll that equates the poll that, that our union groups are getting. Except for that group, obviously, um, Mr. Donlin is retiring and Ms. Holland, uh, who's moving on to, to Canton. We have an addendum that's already voted for. Everything else there are just your typical um non-union roles that we have. One of the things that you're probably wondering about, we've had some conversation at, at the board level about uh potential furloughs and what that might look like and asking groups to consider furloughing PD days and so on. What I'm asking of the committee tonight is simply to approve current COLAs going into next year. And then if furloughs are ultimately ratified by all of our union groups and therefore voted and ratified by the school committee, hopefully weeks, um, then this group, uh, we did a survey with this group as well. Uh, and those group members who are elected to take the furlough days and still take furlough days, which is different than the COLA uh that we're applying here. Mr. Donlin, do you want to share any other information about just the calculation there?
It's just two percent off of the, this year's uh number, uh, if you two, two percent more.
Paul, can we, are we sure the numbers are right? I didn't check all of them, but can we make sure that the two percent is really two percent?
I did, and Ms. Barney checked me too.
All right. Excel should work handily with that one, should be pretty easy. Just want to make sure. My question is, uh, uh, assuming the board approves, uh, will those non-union uh persons' contracts be going out?
That's correct. Uh, upon your approval, they get their appointment letter that's got the um, the two percent.
Okay, great, thank you. Then I will make a motion that we approve the uh non-union uh personnel uh contracts as presented.
Actually, Mike, I got two quick questions.
Okay, sorry, Pete. And Mike?
Nope, it's not, and no offense to the people that I'm asking this for. Um, I know Diana's leaving at the end of June, she's listed um on the list, and I know Paul is also retiring and he's listed. Um, do we need to approve their salaries? For any reason?
No, I'm sorry if I didn't, I thought I mentioned it, but I'm sorry if I, if I missed it. There are your two exceptions. You had already approved an addendum for um Ms. Mullen, uh, for brief extension. And obviously, Mr. Donlin, um, is retiring, congratulate him.
Okay, and that's fine, I just want to make sure that we approve this correctly. I'm sorry, so I, I second Mike's motion.
All right, roll call. Brandon leading?
Yes.
Gates, yes, Hayes?
Yes.
Limblom?
Abstain.
Long?
Yes.
Uh, motion passes four, zero with one abstention by Ms. Limblom. All right, moving on to uh, old business. Fiscal year twenty fees. This is on the agenda as a school committee at large item. Um, I wasn't aware of I didn't see any backup on it. I'm, I'm assuming it's relative to potential discussion on reimbursement of fees, but I'm not entirely sure. Oh, Janice and Ron created this agenda, so I'm not exactly sure.
I'll, I'll take it off with it and then turn it over to Janice for any further information, but the long and short is, I know that the committee has had a lot of questions regarding the fees. I had a committee member reach out and request that it be added to the agenda for continued discussion. Uh, so that's why you see that there's no presentation on it. You've had all the presentation materials over the past several meetings. I know the committee discussed it as well. To add it to the agenda for so that's why it says committee at large, there's no further material.
Yeah, I mean, that's basically why it was added. I mean, it's an ongoing discussion. I know we voted not to, but I think we should still, you know, keep discussing it.
Okay.
As a possibility.
Okay, um, then I'll take over a little bit here. Um, first of all, um, I think every, I'll, I'll speak for myself, but after we voted on this, um, I had a difficult time trying to understand the other ramifications, repercussions, so on and so forth. I'm very, very strongly about my opinion and what I said, I still believe in that what we're trying to do is preserve the payment of salaries this year and into next year. Um, but with further discussion, further research, um, further questions, um, I feel like that it's reasonable for this committee to discuss again and potentially um revote the reimbursement of full day K fees. Um, a couple of things. We need to remember, you know, if we do want to consider a revote, we need to consider a couple of things. Number one, um, who our base is, right? Um, we're here to protect our teachers, we're also here to protect all of our citizens and our um students and their families. Um, I also feel as though whatever vote we make, as we're going into unprecedented times and unknown times, we're, we're setting a precedent. Meaning, if we refund any fees now, we're going to be expected to have similar reimbursement going forward potentially. I don't think anyone knows what next year is going to look like. But I'm assuming that there will be some days where the distance, where distance learning will continue. Um, my concern, again, is if we do decide to vote again on this and we do decide to reimburse fees, that we might be up against the same line of questioning next year. Um, and as we clearly stated last time, the district relies on this revenue to run our school system. Uh, our staff comprises roughly eighty-five percent of our budget, and we need to continue to pay those salaries as well as uh other expenses related to it. Um, so what I'll take this item up for discussion, for discussion is, I also spoke with speaking with Paul, right? I was speaking with Paul, um, and we, we clarified some numbers, um, got some additional detail. And, and I wanted to share with the committee and those that are here listening to us that I think that it's reasonable for us to reconsider the reimbursement of full day K fees. Um, I don't want to set a precedent in terms of we're going to revote everything. I don't want to set a precedent that we're going to re, re, uh, you know, reimburse fees every year. Um, but ultimately, I, I do feel like it's the right thing to do. These, these families didn't receive the services that, that, that they were provided, that they signed up to receive. Um, it has a financial impact, but I believe, believe that we will be able to overcome that with minimal to no impact in this year and next year's budget. I want to leave it open for discussion for us to the committee to discuss the potential to bring this back for a revote or, or, or further discussion.
So Peter, I have one question for that before we get into it. Why just full day K and not busing where it impacts a much larger family, uh, family base?
That's a discussion. That's a discussion.
I'm asking you why, I'm asking you why you're only starting with full day K fees and not the other fees that we also voted on?
Because that's what I focused my attention to since, since that meeting. That's all that I discussed, and it was a more substantial number. That's why. I, I, for no reason other than that. There are lots of other fees out there. There are bus fees and other fees out there. So again, it's setting a precedent and, you know, if we reimburse this fee, how many other fees out there that we don't know about are going to be asked to be reimbursed? It's a difficult. But.
So if you and Paul looked at the uh K kindergarten fees, what's the budget impact?
Sorry, say that again?
You, you said you and Paul looked at the numbers for the full day K fees, what's the budget impact?
It's uh seventy-four thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars and ninety-five cents.
That's the refund number?
Yes.
Out of FY twenty?
FY twenty. Paul, confirm that number.
Yes, that is the number. My faithful assistant, Ms. Andrea, seventy-four thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars and ninety-five cents. That is, everybody that paid full, whether it was reduced or anything like that, it was about a hundred people that had paid full. That would be give them back the last eight hundred dollar payment.
I mean, I don't disagree that, you know, I, I agree with the points that the parents have made about refunding full day K. Um, but thinking about the money we just, that the town just received from Plymouth County, I would feel more comfortable voting to refund um FDK and bus fees if we saw some of that money to put back into the budget. So we wouldn't have that shortage. I mean, that's a large chunk of change um that we have budgeted for. Um, and if we are refunding it due to COVID, that should come out of that million plus that we just got a check for.
Full day K, what other fees? What is the full spectrum again of fees that we haven't, that people couldn't get a refund for? Is it just the bus thing and the full day K?
You mean, what fees would we reimburse? I think just the buses, I mean, I think.
You know what I mean? Like, so if we're opening it up, we're going to look at bus, bus and full day K. Is there anything else hidden that a parent could get in receiving a refund for because the service wasn't provided or because of COVID?
Um, I mean, I don't, I mean, we refunded the athletic fees. Yeah, you, you're kind of breaking up, Nicole.
Oh, sorry.
I can, the other fee I think would be the ECC, because you already authorized ECC, you already authorized me to refund um SATs and we're gonna, we're gonna figure that one out um there. I do have a little bit of information from Plymouth County on this, when we are not going to be getting reimbursed for full day kindergarten fees or ECC fees or bus fees or any of those fees. Nancy told me that, I think it was Friday, Friday night. Um, they're going to formally um reject that um as a, because it was a known cost. And as Ron has said all the way along, uh, we budgeted for that. Um, and what you do with that is up to the school committee and whether you want to reimburse or not reimburse. That was budgeted. Um, so that's their rationale. These are reimbursement for, you know, monies that, from Plymouth County, unless they open it up, which, you know, there's a possibility they may do that. That's completely different, but as of right now, the answer is probably going to be from Plymouth County, no.
So do we have wiggle room with um the budget where like other costs have not, uh, we haven't, have less expenditures related to like the schools being closed, like the, like supplies and clean, you know?
Yes, we have, we have a, a lot of those. One of the big ones we got was, and you remember me talking about um low on the cost for out of districts and for special education vans? Well, the only one we got was special education vans. The special education van companies did come through with lower costs. So we have some savings there. North River came really through with some um good, good sized, lower cost for us. Um, but the OODs did not. Um, and there's legislation, I believe it's called um the chapter ninety-two of the Acts of twenty twenty, uh, in which basically reaffirms the OSD pricing and basically takes D O R out of it. Um, in that chapter forty-one, section fifty-two. And if you don't do the work, you don't get paid, basically. That's what that one was. So there is legislation that's been um proposed. Um, so we're not going to get any money uh savings from the OODs that we have out there as of presently. Um, so yes, we have some electricity savings, we have some natural gas savings. We had, not because of COVID, because we had a mild winter on natural gas.
Yeah.
But the electricity, we are going to save a little bit of extra money. We have a, a little bit of fuel savings from um the buses and the vans. Um, but speaking of buses, um, you know, basically it's drivers and the lease of the buses. That's basically it. Um, you know, and we, we paid both of those, we had to pay off. The only thing we had any savings on is the fuel. And that's probably in the neighborhood of twenty-five thousand dollars that I was planning on putting towards FDK if you guys were going to do that tonight. Uh, that was one of them. Uh, the special education vans, that was the other one I was going to um make the adjustment um with the, those types of monies and the electricity.
So Paul, can I add one thing to your, can I add one thing to your, to your comments, Paul, just to remind the committee of some of the presentations we've had over the past few weeks? Um, as we looked at some of our contingency plans for twenty-one, we do have in, in almost every contingency, uh, repaying a portion of our out-of-district special education costs with some of our FY twenty savings now. That's certainly a moving target for sure, uh, but I don't want to lose sight of, of that as part of a, a larger plan that many of our unions have been part in, in, in developing.
Right. That's true, and, and with those other three, I, I wasn't counting on those ones um before. Uh, the special education van was, was a, uh, was good for us. Um, that, that's what I was, you know, when Peter asked me about this one, um, what the number was and how we were going to pay for it. I still think we can make the hundred thousand dollars that we have in contingencies in a lot of those MOUs, Ron, plus um based on what I'm looking at right now. We're, we're doing the last payroll for the teachers today or tomorrow that's going to go in. They will have that number, I have a good idea what it's going to be. Um, so this will be a telling week.
And I'd be surprised too to see, you know, parking fees for students, the full day K and the, the bus fees. I mean, I think, I mean, I don't want to speak for families and put words in anybody's mouth, but I mean, parent, I would be thrilled if I got back any portion of any fee that I paid. Personally, it's a win, you know, it's money that your family essentially budgeted for and expected to spend, and then COVID happened, and if you can get a little bite back, it's it's welcome, you're grateful for it. So, I mean, even if we had to look outside of the like refunding the food spread around, like you have this outfit here that we're going to save, and this money came from here, and it becomes, you know, I don't know, what if it's like two hundred thousand dollars or something? I'm throwing that out there, but could we divide that by our bus, give a quarter or a half of the buck feedback, give the kids back the parking fee, and give half of the K feedback to those hundred families or something like four hundred dollars, so that everybody feels equitable in terms of what they're receiving back? And, and everybody knows that this is so fluid, that we, the information we had two weeks ago, we didn't have all of, and there's so many negotiations going on. So even though we made that vote, that was based on that, that day's information and what had come so many different places to get us to that day. And we're trying to be fiscally responsible and looking ahead to a deficit coming through for September. So I think we're just like, I think everybody understands we're in a moving wheel here and we have to, but I think we are be trying to be flexible and here are families that are concerned about paying money for services they haven't received and you know, we also, like Mike Long said, I mean, we do have to look at what's the precedence for twenty twenty-one. I mean, if we're out for four weeks or eight weeks, do we give, uh, do we have a threshold where for, who knows if we're out for six weeks, do we, does that trigger some kind of a you know, those people are going to want money back too, you know? And I know this is a weird thing too, but I mean, having a kindergartner going in myself, it's like where I'll have our kindergarten, we only have, I think last check, it was three half-days. You know, we have to kind of think as much as we can about this because it's like, why would I? You know, we have to kind of think as much as we can about this, because it's like, why would I not put my daughter in half-day that? Right up front, I'm not gonna pay a fee, and what if we're only, you know, I mean, thinking as a parent, parents are having these conversations, so I just think we as the school committee and as a district and leadership, we have to consider throwing it all out there of what the conversation is, and how can we help?
Yeah.
Paul, do we get any savings from the, the bus lease, because we haven't been using the buses? I thought I saw one other town was able to renegotiate their lease through the MASC emails we received. I just didn't know if there was anything in there that we could leverage, or going forward, if we can leverage if we're not using the buses. I mean, I know we have them because they're sitting, you know, at the T station, but, you know, do we have any savings or revenue there if we, the buses aren't actually being used?
The short answer is no. I will check again. I did check at the very beginning when somebody mentioned it, but the answer was no, because we'd already paid it. I mean, let me, let me just tell you something. I mean, the insurance for student athletes that we pay once a year, I couldn't get a, I couldn't get them to give us one-third off for the spring sports, because we didn't have it. And they used the excuse, well, we don't know what the fall sport, we're going to come in, what type of, you know, we were gonna have some claims from the fall sports. I said, that argument really doesn't hold water, but that's their argument they're using right now. And the leasing company said, you've already paid this, that you agreed to this lease. So the only savings we haven't paid is, like I said, was, was the fuel and the diesel fuel and and that's market, and we have a big depot down at the Highway Barn, and we, you know, the school committee paid for, you know, brand-new tanks a while ago, and the and then, and then the gas. So, yeah, we've had some savings there, but that's it. Other than that, we're paying.
Can you hear me?
If we.
We can hear you.
All right. I don't know what happened. Sorry, my video's out, but at least you can see me. I'm in here.
Can I ask a question first?
Yes.
Which side of the Chromebook does the power source go into? I got.
The right side, the right side, the right side. And there should be a little light that comes on if it's incorrectly. I had the same problem. I think that's why my computer froze, or my screen froze.
Yeah. It blinks if I hold it in.
There should be a little light that comes on right next to where you input the charger.
Yep, it's blinking, so.
I think that's what it does.
All right.
If I may, I guess I only had a couple of comments. I just want to remind everyone that knowing what's in store for us for fiscal '21, every nickel we spend or give back this year is gone to assist in keeping staff for next year. And and, you know, believe me, I am sympathetic. I mean, I, I don't have kids in the school system anymore. I have grandchildren, and my children are, you know, struggle with these fees, so, and I paid them for years, and I get it, but at the same time, nobody's in situat has received the education they were promised in September. And so, those are my two comments.
Mike, I, I agree entirely with you, and that's the, the struggle with this. I don't think there's a, a right and a wrong answer. Again, as we said, and I specifically said at the last meeting regarding this, is we're using these funds to limit our deficit for next year.
Correct.
And that is still the case.
Yep.
However, since then, we have potentially realized a few extra dollars in savings which would go towards reimbursing this particular fee. I think my current concern is, if we reimburse this particular fee, what other fees out there are families either deserve it of, or will they come looking for? And that's a real concern. With that being said, you know, I don't know if these kindergarten families have other students in the district, but perhaps this is their first experience with our schools, and to spend upwards of thirty-five hundred dollars and not receive the services they were promised doesn't start off a good relationship with the district.
True, and, and one of the things I had brought up previously that I'd be more sympathetic to would be if a family has a child that will be going on to first.
I think he lost his power.
I don't know.
Everyone else here? Janice, Nicole?
Yeah, no, he's, I think he lost. I think what he was going towards was maybe like a credit in the fall. I think he had mentioned that before. Paul, what is the bottom, what is the total number for what we're saving with everything that you just mentioned? Do you have a total amount?
I don't. It's, you know, I don't know what we're, what the last electricity bill's gonna be, the last natural gas bill's gonna be. I don't know that. I do know there's about twenty-five thousand, twenty-six thousand in fuel for the buses and the vans that we're saving on. I do know that, and I do know that we got probably around thirty, thirty thousand from North River for the special education vans. That's what I was planning on. Some consideration thereof.
So we're looking at, that's like fifty thousand, right there?
Yep, and we have some other savings, obviously, the, the, not obviously. Our materials are gonna be lower, but we, we, we do, we, we do need some of that material budget to fill in for the OOD opportunity, you know, challenges that we had during the year. So I'm looking to offset that. I'll know better tomorrow or probably Wednesday. I got a real good idea where we're gonna run on, on on payroll, and there might be a little bit of opportunity there based on a few other things that I know. So I think we'll be all right. I still think we'll be able to make the, what we call in the unions and the MOUs. I think, I think that's still good. I think this is a little bit extra that maybe we would have been able to put a little bit more towards the prepay that Ron discussed. But now we're gonna, if you guys vote, we're gonna give back. So there's, there's pluses and minuses to everything.
Yeah.
Yeah. Does it, does it make, you know, since the last meeting several weeks ago, we've learned a lot more information. As a committee, do you feel as if maybe we wait, and I think that we're gonna schedule a meeting on June 25th? Do we want to postpone further discussion and a vote until that date, until we get more up-to-date information? Is that, Paul, do you think that would help in terms of giving us the financial picture?
No, no. If you're gonna do it, I would much rather you do it now, today. That gives us, no, I mean, and it gives me a little bit more time to, to make sure what I got by the end. The 25th really, you know, I, I know what I'm gonna have to give back for full day kindergarten. I know what that number is, and, but it takes a little while to add in a hundred names into the, to cut those checks. So if I could get a little bit of time to do that, if you're gonna decide, tonight is the night to do it. In my opinion, that, that's mine. If we, if we, 25th, it just makes it a little bit tougher for us to get everything in and get it out by June 30th. I know Nancy gives us a little bit more time than that.
You mean, you have to have the checks cut before July 1st?
You know, we do. Otherwise, we gotta encumber. Which is basically held it over till like the 10th of July, and then it'll be cut then. This gets it in their hands a little quicker.
Okay.
And, and the.
Paul, for all the numbers that you brought up tonight, how many are new that were, I mean, you brought the twenty-five thousand and the thirty thousand. How much of that is new numbers that you didn't include in any of the discussions? Either with the unions or with, you know, as we looked at things over the past couple months? Like, the twenty-five thousand for fuel, were you expecting any savings at fuel? And, you know, maybe ten thousand is bigger than what you thought, or is this twenty-five thousand new dollars that you're looking at?
Probably at least ten, ten thousand dollars more than I, that I knew about in April. The van, the van is all new, that's thirty. That's ten, that's forty. Like Janet said, it's probably around fifty thousand dollars that's new. As any good finance guy will tell you, I held back a little bit, because I didn't know where we were gonna go on a lot of things. So the other twenty-five, I'm comfortable with. Because I gave Ron, when he asked me back then, I gave him a conservative number that he could live with in the MOUs, hoping we could do a little better. And we might not have to go to three, we might, you know, go to two, we might, you know, it all depends. I don't know, depends on where we're gonna be.
And again, Paul, if, if you, if we can realize these savings, it has no impact to our next year's proposed budget, which we will be voting on next.
The 25th.
The 27th. Yes, it does not, no.
But so I, that, that's what I think we're trying to express, is that if we do vote and we do agree to refund these fees, that with further information, updated figures, we feel confident they will have no impact on next year's budget, because essentially, that's why I voted against it, because I didn't want to impact next year's budget. And if we can refund these fees without impacting it, then I, to me, it changes the story.
Look, can I interject there for a second? I, I think that, I appreciate the dialogue on this. I want to underscore that we've been working with, you know, a number of our unions to take a look at concessions that the groups may be interested in willing to do on their behalf to support the district as we face just about a million-dollar revenue deficit. Those are not guaranteed to be passed, and so if they are not, then you are gonna look at a revenue deficit going into the summer. I just, I don't want to, I feel like the dialogue just assumes that's going to be passed, and that there won't be any issue in '21. And I just would hate to have you count the chickens before they hatch necessarily, and you know, kudos to Paul and the finance team, that they're always conservative with their estimates. Again, I echo Mr. Hayes' sentiment. I feel for, for the families that have given those fees, and I'm a parent, not here, but in other school district, I have given fees for, for my son as well. I just, I want to make sure that, that, go into any votes with eyes wide open, that any reserves that you may have could go to offset prepays if you're out of district, be it a dollar, five dollars, a thousand dollars, so on. I just think that's important to underscore.
Paul, how many kids take the bus right now?
Sixteen hundred.
So if we refunded a third of that.
Oh, no, no, no. How many paid? There's not, not, that was, that was fee and no fee. I don't know the answer to to that. The only fee that we, well, yeah, I don't know that answer. I didn't look at.
I'm sorry, you said sixteen hundred?
That's how many are free and paid. Yeah.
So even if you, even if you have that, and you refund a third of the bus fee, which is eighty dollars, which, again, this is a much bigger impact to the district, that's sixty-five thousand dollars that we would refund if we refunded a, a portion of the bus fees as well. And if we have a conversation about full day K, we need to make a decision on the buses at the same time. And that's an additional sixty-four thousand dollars ballpark, you know, not knowing every bit of information that would need to be part of this conversation. And I'm not saying I'm opposed to this, I'm saying that that's, you know, about the same number.
Yeah.
And, and potentially any other fees that we, you know, ECC and others that may, that may be out there. I mean, I think this is the challenge that we're having as a committee. I think Ron's point is right, that we're assuming that the negotiations are gonna pass and that, 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 that will, that will work. We're also assuming that this is the number, the seventy-four-two-two-oh-ninety-five for full day K, but the bus fee is about sixty-five, and then that puts it in a larger deficit. So I think we're all struggling with it for the same reason. I wish we could just give everyone the money back. It's why we're having this discussion now, because we, we want to thoughtfully discuss it, and we know we already have. We talked to a long, long time about it.
I think the other thing with the K too, where the, the timing was just terrible for family and just with COVID. It just like their final payment really coincided with school closures, and then it was like, some people are, you know, very, some people sent it in promptly and other people did not, and it's, and it, I guess their feedback I've received is just that people feel they're almost penalized for sending in a fee on time, ironically, and those that didn't were like, you know, like, well, I'm not gonna send it in logically, because my child did not receive that piece of schooling. So, you know, I, I see that, that, that would be my or saying, what fees do we refund at this point? You know, what are we relooking at? Why kindergarten? Why not the buses? Why not, you know, ECC? I mean, I don't know, that, that piece of it, you know, it's another little caveat to the.
Right. I mean, with the bus fees, everybody had to pay the bus fee before the start of school.
Right.
Whereas the kindergarten is on the payment plan.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's hard, because you want, you do want to give the money back, but you also, looking ahead to September, don't want to, you know, have to lay off, lay off teachers, because we now don't have money.
Right.
And, and if anybody's paying attention, I mean, there are towns all around us that are laying off a lot of people.
Yeah, it's a good point.
And cutting programs, which is heartbreaking. And that is, I think, you know, as bad as it sounds for us, like, I think we're looking pretty good compared to which is, you know.
Yeah.
Excuse me, guys, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Mike.
Okay, because I'm on the phone.
Yeah.
And if I, if I have the only Chromebook, the charger doesn't work, I'm gonna start taking.
I'm so glad you're on the technology subcommittee. Great.
Mike, I can tell you one for seventy-five grand.
Mr. Gates, if I could interject for a moment, is a, you know, I appreciate that Mr. Donlin would prefer to have some decisions sooner rather than later. That said, I know that the committee is interested in trying to meet again on the 25th, will be able to take a look at, you know, the financial landscape at that point, right? Hopefully amend your FY21 budget, hopefully able to vote on some potentially ratified MOUs and MOAs across the labor groups. And while that's very close in order to, to cut checks, I think it would allow the ops team to get you a really tight number on there is any revenue left over, assuming MOAs are ratified, assuming we have an amended budget. If there were revenue left over and the forecast looks good for '21 in terms of ensuring that all of the, you know, five hundred SPS employees remain with our schools, remain with our kids, and I think everybody would be in favor to give back as much as we could in peace and distribute it as equitably as the committee saw fit. While I know it jams up Mr. Don a little bit in his last month or so before retirement, I would, I would encourage the committee to consider reconsider this item on the.
That's, that's where I, even, even after Paul said that, I was still reconsidering. I was still, that was kind of where I was headed, because I think, you know, I hate to overuse the word fluid, but it truly is a fluid situation, and as we know, new, new numbers, and we know the outcome of the negotiations, we can better plan on what, how to best to move forward.
I think families will be just as happy to get, if we, if we decide to refund it, at least they'll, I think they'll be happy that we're doing that, even if they are getting the checks a little bit later than expected.
Yeah.
Fine.
Paul, we, Paul, we can come in and help code everything. I mean, you could, I don't know how the process, that if we do vote this way, or vote to refund or reimburse, I mean, maybe you could just set it all up, so all the account information's in there, and then just hit go. I don't know. There's technology out there, right? I don't know. Okay, so I don't know if we need a motion, but just to add this to our Okay, so I I don't know if we need a motion, but uh, just to add this to our June 25th agenda item for discussion and vote.
I'm making the notes now.
Okay, so I don't think we need to vote on that. We'll just put it as a future agenda item.
Okay.
Any other comments right now?
Yeah, I'd like to re, to uh, reiterate what I said is is I'd be more sympathetic to uh, discussing um, apparent parents who have a kindergartner, full day kindergarten now, and they have one coming right up again uh, to consider uh, giving them some relief. But um, uh, I don't know how many there are, if there are any, I believe there are a few. But uh, that would be one uh, thing I I would consider as well.
Okay.
Rather than a reimbursement, rather than a reimbursement to give them a credit for their next child.
Okay.
Because that would spread out the, that would spread out the um, the budget impact because there will be a budget impact for next year, Pete, because uh, depending upon, again, it's fluid, but depending upon things, how things go, the more money we have to pre-spend, the easier it will be to retain staff in September.
Absolutely. And that's the main reason why we voted the way we did last time. That was exactly the sentiment of the commit, myself and and of the committee. Um, just what we're learning, Mike, quickly, is that, you know, there's some additional funds that 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 have potentially come due as a result of lower expenses that may potentially add up to 75.
No, I I could hear it all, but I I couldn't speak the last time.
Okay.
Star six didn't get through, I guess, but.
Okay.
Anyway.
So we'll postpone to um, the June 25th meeting for further discussion and vote.
Great.
Right. Thank you. I know that there's a lot of people out there listening. Thank you for tuning in and we'll continue this discussion on the 25th. Sorry for the delay. Uh, moving on, uh, COVID-19 projected impact on FY21 budget, uh, Ron and Paul.
Thank you all. Again, interest of time, I'll be brief, back up there in front of you. Um, a couple of items that I think are apropos to bring the committee up to speed on. So DESI released some guidance regarding uh, purchase of PPE for the reopening of schools in the fall. It actually uh, lit up a media storm. I think some of the media took that release as it is not. It is purely uh, PPE uh, purchasing information, recommendations for uh, equipment for staff, for students, for nursing staff, for custodians, drivers, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, and in that recommendation, they included, you know, potential variation of the number of uh, students that you would have in classrooms. And uh, as Mr. Gates said, because that information is fluid, there were lots of different iterations there. They had some assumptions that I've included in there for you. But essentially, the the long and short is, you know, things like face coverings and masks for students and staff, hand washing and hand sanitation, of course, uh, and trying to maintain that six feet of social distancing separation. Um, what they did was they put out a set of materials that uh, school districts at a minimum should should look into purchasing for a three-month um, supply. And then took a look for us at uh, options that you saw through things like comp buys and, you know, other state lists. Uh, you should know that um, our team, um, myself, Mr. Donlin, uh, our incredible nurse leader, Ms. Roach, uh, have been looking at this for the past month or so already. Uh, I've put through initial purchases um, with just the recommendations from our nursing team here in Situate. Uh, so that we could try to get ahead in line, which is going to be quite a large queue across the country for all the PPE that school districts around the country are going to need. Uh, so we already have purchases in uh, for some initial supplies. And now the DESI has put out the uh, list of required materials. We're putting in the much larger purchase to get that three-month set of supplies for for our schools. Uh, one other item that I think is is important to just keep in the back of your mind, we talked a little bit about costs of some of these things. This time, um, these costs would be directly um, applicable to COVID-19. So we believe that all those costs now and into the future will be able to be applied to, you know, Plymouth County Cares Act and those sorts of things, the uh, the resources that are designated for for COVID. Um, we again recognize that's a fluid situation and we're hopeful that there'll be more state and federal aid to support these kinds of costs for for school districts. Just now we've kind of added some materials where you can see some of the general estimates that some of the national, you know, business and finance director put together. Uh, if all of the, you know, CDC and state level requirements were to be adhered to for um, the current needs for PPE and those didn't change into the fall, you can see those projections over time and where those for school district roughly our size. Again, these are only estimates based only on the current information that we have right now. We're expecting to get some more information from DESI in the coming days and weeks uh, in terms of what next year will look like and what the, you know, final recommendations might be for the model of education for next year. Uh, but these, you know, these were, these material sets, as we see them right now, are purely a three-month supply of PPE. Um, Paul, do you want to add any further information detail to the broad summary about PPE for next year?
Uh, only that um, the list is due into DESI by this Friday, uh, per today's guidance. Um, and they're going to send it to Operational Service Division and try to get some better pricing. You don't have to use them, um, you know, OSD. You can use some of their vendors. You can do it on your own. Um, and so uh, we're looking, we're looking at that. We'll definitely send our our numbers up to um, DESI by Friday. And then also we're going to look at uh, trying to source some of this on our own. That's about it.
We'll keep the committee up to speed for sure as, you know, anything changes with the recommendations for um, PPE. And and again, I wanted to underscore, um, these are not uh, reflective of what the educational structure will look like for the fall necessarily. And that you'll be getting that in the coming weeks again, direct from DESI. Um, and obviously, our school district will be able to use that guidance to develop um, you know, the models for Situate. And on that time, in a more formal presentation of what the fall will look like, what associated costs for all things, you know, education.
Any questions?
Um, yeah, I have a couple of questions and I'm looking at this graphic. Um, and but um, you know, it says uh, the cost for a full-time nurse in every school. I mean,
Yeah, we already have that.
We have that. We have a lot of these items. Um, so I mean, I hope it the, that 1.7 isn't as severe.
Oh, it's not.
Yeah.
I want to just underscore, this is just a a national average to a district that's roughly our size. Um, coming, again, it says it right on the graphic, right? This is coming from, you know, sort of the national uh, groups um, that do some of these projections. And well, the intention of it is really just to give you a sense of the scale. I think sometimes people focus on, you know, the masks themselves, and that's certainly one part of it. Uh, but there are lots of other sort of buckets of of resources that have to be allocated if we're thinking about um, you know, the current CDC and Department of uh, of Health Recommendations.
Yeah, I mean, like, the cost to resume, like resuming child, after-school childcare program, I mean, that's would be on the Y. Would it, you know, it's if if we had it, would that not be?
Yeah. It, this was just something I found, we found, and you know, it just happened to to be a little bit apropos and it was a little bit over, over the top, really.
Yeah, yeah.
If you look at, if you look down below, it says bus fleets would need to quadruple inside, which is unfeasible. It's not. We just can't do that.
Right.
There isn't enough bus drivers for that thing, but.
I think that's what the the graphic was just trying to intend, was just to say like, look, you know, folks are talking a lot about the current uh, safety regulations and what, you know, what would that look like as we start to project it? Uh, and so I appreciate that sort of national perspective on what that application of of recommenda, uh, recommendations would would cost at this time.
Right.
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments?
Yeah, Ron, I have one question on this. So as we, you know, just looking at deep cleaning of a school after confirmed case. Um, is that something that we have staff that can handle, or do we have to hire someone to come in and do for us? Um, how would that look?
I'll start us off and then turn it over to Paul. The short answer is we have equipment that's recently just arrived for our custodial staff to be able to clean the schools. But what we're going to be waiting on, uh, Paul, correct me if I'm wrong here, is just going to be further guidance about what the protocol is. Right? So for example, bless you, we expect that uh, in the next couple of weeks, DESI will come out with some protocols, uh, along with the Department of Public Health around in the fall. If this happens, you would have this level of response. But if this happens, you'd have a more significant level of response. And so we have the equipment and staff training here. Um, but we're not sure if we're going to be able to have the equipment and staff training that may require the most significant level of response. So I wish I could give you a more clear answer, but the short answer is we have staff, we have equipment, it may or may not be uh, it may be like a, you know, first or second tier response. But if there's a required third tier response, it's like professional cleaning of a school, we're not at that level of capacity. Paul, do you want to add anything to that?
Just the only thing we do know, Mike, is we have, uh, we did do um, Wamper Tuck uh, professional deep cleaning and that was 58,000 square feet and it cost us $15,000. Um,
One for one time.
For one time, if.
And Paul, I'm not concerned about the cost as much as I am just the, you know, if if it's something that staff can handle to a certain tier, or if it's something that every time we needed to have someone come in, we had had a case, we had to bring people in to do the um, cleaning for us.
Right, yeah. We can probably handle some of the smaller, uh, you know, regular cleaning and everything else. But if we really had to go to a deep cleaning, especially at the high school complex, you're talking 300,000 square feet. That's, that's big. That would include all staff, um, all custodial work, everybody, if we were going to do that, every machine we possibly could have, we'd have to borrow from the town. Uh, they have a couple of machines too. Um, yeah, we could do it, I I think, but it like Ron said, it depends on what the protocol is going to be.
There'll likely be some tiers that we can handle and there'll likely be a top tier that just professional cleaners would have to handle. And I would underscore Paul's uh, perspective about Wamper Tuck is a good example for us. I think that scale would would need to be replicated and then sort of questions around, you know, where we'd find revenue resources to to cover those kinds of of, you know, continual cleaning costs.
Okay, now that answers my question. Thank you.
Can I ask one, one question? Uh, I read an article a couple of weeks ago and they did a national survey of teachers. And the results of that were 25% of the uh, teachers that were polled were reluctant to come back to school without a vaccine. Has there been any discussions situated along those lines?
There hasn't been at this time. I know there's been some some memos circulated at the state level. Um, I know that we're currently working with DESI on setting up some protocols to ensure that A, things are clean and safe and B, people feel clean and safe in their their working environment. Uh, but no surveys or or um, discussion at this time locally.
That could be a huge budget problem.
I agree.
I just, I just have one question for either you, Paul, or Ron. Um, I know that the the town specifically has received COVID-related funds. Um, I I don't know, I heard 80,000, I heard 100,000 or whatever. Do we actually have those funds right now that we could use to support that, at least the Wamper Tuck cleaning?
The answer is yes. Nancy's already put that back into our budget.
Okay.
Well, actually, I I shouldn't say not our budget. She's put it back into that line item that she set aside.
Okay.
So a little bit of con, quick context if I can. So there's an emergency fund that was set up at the outbreak of the pandemic. Uh, we are able to apply for um, costs to that fund. The intention will be that the Plymouth County Cares Funds would then replenish that fund.
Okay.
Do they give any guidance on what that money can be used for? Like, what are the parameters? Because I know that people, like what districts use the money for broadly?
The cares money you're talking about?
Yeah.
Again, I'll kick us off, but Paul, feel free to throw in some more information there. Plymouth County is one of the few entities that um, is currently controlling their distribution of funds. I know there's been some discussion about trying to alleviate that. Uh, they have to be applied to COVID-specific um, equipment, services, materials. And so that Wamper Tuck cleaning is a great example, absolutely specific to COVID. Uh, operating budget is an example that wouldn't necessarily be applied to those funds. Again, I know there's some legislative discussions, local governance discussion around how to maybe loosen some of those purse strings, which would be beneficial to municipalities in Plymouth County as well as school districts. I don't believe at this time that's changed. Paul, is there anything to add to that? Did I miss something there?
No, I don't. Yeah, that's exactly. No.
Do we ever, do we ever figure as to the total amount released so far by the uh, county commissioners?
I don't have that.
All of Plymouth County?
No, I I don't.
Yeah, that'd be interesting to find out.
Hmm.
Hmm. All right. Any other questions or comments? All right, then this is um, I'm going to move on to the next agenda item. This is going to be the uh, reordering of item 8A, Resolution to the State of Massachusetts on the Impact of Reopening Schools in the Fall. Um, sorry if you see my, I'm like frozen in time there, but I'm not really. Not sure what that, what I'm doing in that video, but or in that photo, but. Um, look at, no, right on it. So um, I moved this because based upon or the discussion that we just had um, relative to Ron and Paul is um, several local school committees with the support of MASC, which is the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, has created and recommended that all Massachusetts school committees submit um, a resolution to the State of Massachusetts ultimately requesting that they cover fees directly related to COVID-19 and the reopening of schools. Um, what I'm going to do here is just read the resolution and we'll just need to take a vote. And if it is um, passed, we'll be submitting it to the folk, to to the folks and I'll I'll let you know at the end. So let me just read this. It might take uh, maybe two minutes. Um, whereas if schools are to reopen this fall in the midst of the COVID-19 pandemic, it is the responsibility of each school district to do so safely and reasonably. And whereas it is a responsibility of the state to ensure that each school district is able to pay for the enormous additional staffing, transportation and material expenses required to do this and whereas the state cannot expect mandatory COVID-19 safety guidelines to be followed without also ensuring that each school district has the funds required to implement these guidelines. Therefore, let it be resolved that the state must guarantee every school district full reimbursement for whatever COVID-19 expenses are required to follow state mandates. We must ensure a statewide school reopening that is safe, responsible and equitable. There can be no unfunded mandates for COVID-19. Um, if resolved or if agreed to today, we would send this resolution to Governor Baker, Secretary of Education James uh, Pfizer, Commissioner of Education Jeff Riley, Senate President Karen Spilka, House Speaker Robert DeLeo, DeLeo, as well as Situate Senators and Representatives requesting full reimbursement for COVID-19 state mandated expenses. Any discussion or questions?
Yeah, when I saw this, I forwarded it to Ron to put on the agenda. I think Pete, you did as well, but I mean, this is getting passed by school districts across the Commonwealth. And I think to me, you know, trying to be as physically responsible as we can, we should try to, you know, all these mandates are coming down, we should definitely make sure that we're trying to um, have the state also fund them or at least a portion of them so that, you know, we're not stuck with, I know the number is high in that document, but you know, 1.6 million dollars of additional fees or costs that we would incur. Um, in order to, you know, have our kids go to school safely and and our staff come in and do their jobs.
Yep. Yeah. So um, as you guys are well aware, I mean, I want to give some credit to MASC. They have been, MASC is the Massachusetts Association of School Committees for which Situate is a member. Our school committee members are are members and they provide some great resources. Among them, it enables us Among them, it enables us to talk to other school districts. They've held several forum, have held and continue to hold several forums where we can learn what other districts are doing. Um, and they also allow us to, to, to group together like they have here and have all these districts sign this letter, uh, which will hopefully provide some sort of impact to providing those relief funds. Um, but MASC has been, at least over the past year, uh, very resourceful and I hope to continue that relationship going forward as they continue to educate all their members, um, on all that is school committee related.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, any other questions or comments on this resolution? If not, uh, entertain a motion.
All right, um, I'll make the motion. Uh, I make the motion that, um, well, it is recommended that the school committee vote to adopt the resolution as read and send it to Governor Baker, Secretary of Education James Pizer, Commissioner of Education, Commissioner of Education Jeffrey Riley, Senate President Karen Spilka, House Speaker Robert DeLeo, as well as situate senators and representatives requesting full reimburse- reimbursement for COVID-nineteen state mandated expenses via roll call vote.
Motion by Limblom, I have a second. Second by Mr. Long. Roll call. Branelini?
Yes.
Gates, yes. Hayes?
Yes.
Limblom?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Motion passing unanimously. We will, um, get this hopefully sent out, coordinated and sent out tomorrow. Thank you. Um, next on the agenda is, uh, South Shore Educational Collaborative Update. Ron?
You've got in your backup, uh, one we did to you. If you have any questions, I can answer those questions for you.
Any questions, comments?
I'm good with it.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right. Um, moving on. Is our, uh, agenda item for our public comments? Um, comments can be through text or through the text chat function on Google.
You've got one.
Yeah, there is one.
Got it. Are we?
I would just ask that she add her address for Jeannie.
All right. Um, all right, the first question is bus applications are due June thirtieth. Since it's such a situation, is there a chance the deadline can be extended or a refund be given if families can't until before September?
The answer is yes, in yes. We will, we will extend till Jul- July. Uh, we'd like to have him in by July fifteenth, if at all possible. And if we're not going to school in September, then we will entertain a refund.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And again, Paul, just to reiterate, your deadlines are generally so that you can theoretically begin to create your bus route. That's why we have these earlier deadlines. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So the earlier that we can get the bus population completed, the earlier that we can, uh, make those changes. Okay.
So Paul, just, just to follow up on that question, you know, after June thirtieth, there's a looks like a twenty-five dollar increase if people, you know, don't pay by June thirtieth.
You're right.
Saying that that, that.
That will not per charge would be, okay. Yeah, we will not have a surcharge.
Okay, thank you.
This is a point of process. Maybe it would be helpful and, and Paul and I can talk about this offline. We can post something on our website, uh, under transportation. It just gives people an update about the deadline.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, I think it is important to stress what Peter said that, you know, in order to plan for whatever opening we have in September, part of that is the bus routes and how we put the kids on the buses. So knowing that, you know, that could change and the refund is possible, I would encourage every family to send in their bus application. So it will make the decision process, the decisions we make easier. Um, the more information we have, the more, you know, um, yeah, how many kids are riding the buses, where, you know, that would be really helpful.
Yes.
Definitely.
Yeah.
And on the bus, uh, sorry, I know this is public comment, but while we're waiting for any other questions. Um, Paul, you and I talked about this, but can we add the bus application, make it online? This is silly to print it out and nail it in. It's ridiculous. So we gotta work towards that.
All right.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, are you still taking questions from the public?
Yes, sir. State your name and address, please.
Yep. Hi, Peter. It's, uh, Joe Gibbons, two-two-three Gannett Road.
Okay.
I, I just have one question. Um, maybe I missed it. Um, what, what was the result of the votes of, uh, the superintendent and the assistant superintendent on the town financial forecasting committee to, to cut the almost one million dollars due to the COVID, um, situation?
The, so the financial forecast is made up of three members of the school department. It's, uh, Mr. Donlin, Mr. Griffin, and in this particular case, it was myself. Um, the three of us, as well as the other committee members, that number roughly ten, all agreed on that, uh, budget reduction, which was mostly a result of reduced state aid.
Okay, so how, how are we going to cut that million dollar? I mean, when are you going to determine where that million dollars is going to be cut from within the school budget?
Tune in on Thursday, the twenty-fifth.
Okay. Is that going to be an open meeting for the public?
Yes, June twenty-fifth will be a newly scheduled, um, school committee meeting to review just that. Um, as we have, we're going before, uh, town meeting on the twenty-seventh, um, for the town to approve the budget. By the twenty-fifth is the date we hope to, um, you know, vote on our final budget with the new numbers.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Any other public questions or chats? All right, great. Um, I'm not aware of any correspondence? Any correspondence?
Nope.
Um, all right, next item is Director of Special Education Search Committee update. Um, not sure who's going to be doing that. Maybe Nicole?
I, okay. Well, um, I haven't received an update on that this week. So I'm not exactly sure where we're at. Last I knew, uh, wait, maybe, maybe Ms. Arnold is going to give us an update since that she is the chairperson of that subcommittee. Would that be right, Jen? Oh, we can't hear you. That's probably why, or I can't.
Me either.
Oh, she's unmuted on me, on my end.
Can you hear her, Janice?
I can't hear her though. I can't see her.
I can see.
I can't see her. Can you let us know? I mean, what we're, what's the status of the search, I guess?
The last, we were, um, recommending that we, I believe we, yeah, oh, sorry. She said she can hear us, but.
Yeah.
Do you want to type it? It's just better for her to update just because I didn't want to get into like reference check. I'm not exactly sure where reference checks are at or any kind of, you know, information's public yet on candidates. So I'd just rather Jen handle it than myself and on, keep in line. I can tell you about the search committee and how delightful it was and how wonderful all the candidates were and things like that, but.
I did it, I did listen in on the, um, open that, uh, last week. There was the, uh, the Zoom call.
Yeah.
Yeah. That was nice. That was like a meet and greet. So is that the only candidate?
Um, that was our, yeah, so, okay, so Bill Burke had checked references, sorry.
The Wednesday was a meet and greet.
I was meaning, yes, and had a, yeah, I mean, so we did have our subcommittee narrowed down to, um, we interviewed, let's see, four candidates. Um, and there's, there were two candidates that we felt strongly about, but, um, okay. So I didn't know if we could say her name. Well, I guess if we had the, the Zoom, we can.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so there's our update there. So Bill Burke had spoke with Michelle, um, who was our candidate on Friday. She's our top candidate. Lightful and anyone who attended the Zoom, um, that was similar that I had heard that she's, um, she's a great candidate and, um, yeah, I'm not sure what the next step is. So after that meet and greet, then reference checks, I suppose, were onto Bill speaking with her further. Um, but.
Can you tell us what her current position is?
She is currently the Director of Special Education, um, in Nantucket.
Wow.
Yeah. And she's looking to make a, um, a move for almost more like personal reasons. So, um,
Yeah, well, that's great.
So she's extremely qualified and, um, I'll tell you, our subcommittee was, um, kind of blown away by her, her qualifications and her experience. Um, she was very knowledgeable, very resourceful. Just a really, seems like a very strong, uh, I think she'd be a great fit for Situate, so.
Great.
Great.
Great, it's good to hear.
Yeah, so hopefully we can go to the next steps with her.
All right, yeah, I, I hope the woman I am aware of, I, I believe that, uh, on the twenty-fifth meeting, which the agenda is getting full, I think that we will, uh, it'll be brought before us for us to approve the appointment.
Okay, yeah.
We wrote the contract. Either, or both. Either way.
Yeah. All right, any other questions?
And then, yeah, so she's interested, so everything is going well.
All right, great. Um, the next item is the Director of Business and Finance Search Committee. Um, update and timeline. Um, that's, I guess for me to, um, to review. Um, what I first wanted to mention is, as we were looking to replace Diana and Paul, the, the question came up several occasions is, who's responsible for hiring this person? Is it a school committee search or is it a superintendent slash incoming superintendent's, uh, responsibility and how does it look? Um, we did receive some feedback from our council and basically it was confirmed that the school committee has the right to complete a search similar to the superintendent's search. Um, however, um, it was determined, um, thus far that, that we weren't going to go that route. And as a result, uh, we've come to the final stages of the, the special ed director. Uh, but as we begin the, um, Paul's replacement, um, kind of just wanted to make it a little bit more formal of a process and run it by the school committee to, to determine whether or not you all wanted to be involved in the search, similar to the setup of the superintendent or like the special ed, um, director. Um, if you wanted to have the search committee, uh, with representation from the school committee and ultimately have the final candidate or candidates come to the school committee, um, for final appointment. Um, so again, if, if we want to run it like a superintendent search, it's going to be much more times, uh, time constraining. Um, we'll need to set up a, set up a, um, search committee and appoint them and approve them. So we couldn't even do that for at least two days. Um, and kind of put us behind by a few days and also it's going to, you know, we're going to have to have all these public interviews. By going the route as we did the special ed director, it's a little bit more efficient, um, less intensive from our perspective and, um, and so on. So just a little bit of discussion from you all, if, if it's okay, um, to move forward with a, you know, a, a search that more looks like the, uh, uh, special ed search, or if you wanted to all be involved and, and move forward like the, the superintendent's search.
I'd be in favor of going forward as the special ed search.
Further discussion, comments?
No, I think, I think if we have of like people in, in the district, you know, like most committees, search committees, I think that would, that works. That's, has worked well.
Okay, I feel, I, I feel as well, but we'll just need, we're going to just vote on a, a general timeline and then also vote on who from the school committee would like to be on that search committee. Um, I would like to be on that one. Is there anyone else that would be interested?
Are you looking for one member, Peter?
All right, we're going to do two. Just be, if we go this route, we're going to do two so that we at least have, you know, you know, two of the five of us involved in this, you know, uh, original interview or initial interview process. I would like to have two. I don't know.
Well, what are we talking about?
Special Ed Director.
What are we? What process are we talking about, Pete?
So there's going to be a search committee, Mike, that's going to be whatever it is, nine or, or, the gens running. And of those, that number of, of the search committee, there'll be two of us from the school committee. You don't want.
Well, I thought I heard that you and Janice are in favor of a full-blown search committee and Michael and I are not and didn't hear what Nicole said.
No, that, that wasn't the case. No, I think we're all agreeing.
Yeah.
No, I was, I was agreeing with you, Mike.
We're agreeing with you too. We're agreeing with both of you. But part of that agreement was that we could have up to two members of the school committee on the search committee.
Okay, that's fine.
I would be one of them. If anyone else wants to join me, you'd, you're welcome to. If you don't want to, then that's fine as well.
I'm not interested in it, if that helps.
Okay, it's fine.
If nobody else is available, I can do it, but I don't want to be a committee hog because I, I really feel like I've been on a lot of committees, which is wonderful, and I've wanted to do that, but if anybody else, I mean, depending on everybody's timing and schedules, I, I can do it. I am, my last day of school is on Friday. So I can do it, but if others. I'm in, I'm, I'm either.
So Janice does not want to do it, um, either of the mics have any interests?
I'm fine with Nicole doing it.
Okay.
I'm fine with, I am too.
All right, Nicole, you and I.
All right.
All right, so Nicole and I will, um, Jen Arnold, if you're there, please add, uh, Nicole as the, uh, search committee onto the search committee. Um, so ultimately, just to go over the timeline, uh, the position's been posted. We've already received nine applications. Um, we'll expect to have, uh, interviews, um, around the, uh, probably the, the first week in July. Um, we'll have those interviews, background checks, questions, so on and so forth, and hope to have a finalist uh, presented by July thirteenth.
Okay.
All right, um.
I have a question, Peter, about this timeline.
Yep.
Because it says like on June twenty-third, school committee executive session.
Yeah, no. That, so this is, this is if we were going to hold it ourselves and that's not really paying much attention to that.
Okay.
Um, really just the deadlines that, that, that this committee needs to know is that, um, we're going to begin interviews probably the beginning of July, um, and that hopefully by July thirteenth, we will be presenting, um, you know, the recommendation.
All right, so we're focusing on just the time, the dates?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yep. Um, and Jen Arnold, it has been appointed to run this search committee as well. Um, so I, again, we didn't necessarily take a vote to, to run the sped, uh, search like this, but I'd like to take a vote on this just to confirm the process, just so that we have it. I'm not sure if it's necessary, but I'd like to do that. Um, again, we're giving up theoretically our right to, to, to do all this, but I think that this is more efficient. I think that we'll get to the same conclusion if we go this route. Um, so I guess I just need a motion, um, regarding the, uh, process and general timeline.
Well, I'm not sure how to put it, but I'll move that we proceed with the business director. uh, search, uh, pursuant to, uh, Jen Arnold, uh, leading the search team, which will include Peter and Nicole.
Okay, that'll work. Second?
Second.
All right, uh, roll call, Branelini?
Yes.
Gates, yes. Hayes?
Yes.
Limblong?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
All right, thanks. Now, that's a little bit messy, but really the distinction I wanna make is that we have the ability to run this search and we're not, we're giving it to, uh, the search committee and the incoming superintendent who ultimately present us with the finalists. All right. Any warrants? Paul? Paul? You're muted.
No.
Not at this time. Okay. Um, any other business?
Future agenda? I have one.
All right. What do you got, Mike?
Well, I think we need to, uh, begin the process of, uh, and I think it's, I think we're late to the party, but we, we need to get the school committee and the board of selectmen and their financial experts together in one room to go over the effects of, uh, the COVID-19 pandemic as to how it's gonna affect the whole town, town side and school committee, uh, uh, going, going forward this way without having, uh, a me, at least one meeting, public meeting to discuss where the town is going, uh, I think is fits us all to, you know, in a pretty tough position. I know people are talking, town hall's talking in the school department, but this is the, uh, biggest issue of our lifetime and I think it requires a, a, a public meeting between the selectmen and the school committee. And, uh, you know, I would hope that Pete, you might be able to start that process.
I will. Mike, I agree with you. It's something you and I had talked about. I've been.
Talking about it today.
Yeah, been mentioning it for a long time. I never did anything about, I think this is a good excuse to make that happen. Um,
Yep.
I'll probably say that it won't be on the June 25th agenda, but probably the agenda short, the next one after that. Is that okay?
Uh, well, yeah, because I mean, I think when town meeting?
The 27th.
Of June.
Yep.
And, uh, I mean, town meeting could be irrelevant by August 1st. So, uh, we need to open up a dialogue, a public dialogue and, uh, and keep that going and not just have one meeting, but we're gonna need more than one meeting, I, I would think, um, because we nobody, nobody really knows what's gonna happen in September. Yeah. So, uh, I think it's very important that the school committee and the board of selectmen be on the same page.
Okay. I agree. I will, um, I will, uh, initiate that.
Great.
Hey, any other future agenda items? So we will plan to meet on, uh, June 25th. I know, I don't think we voted that meeting date yet. I guess we don't have to, but that's when we're planning to do that.
Great.
All right, any, uh, any other questions, comments? Okay.
I'm good.
All right. No, hold on, hold on, hold on, Mike. The, uh, at this point, we will adjourn the, uh, public meeting and enter into executive session for reason number two, to conduct a strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions, contract negotiations with non-union personnel. So I guess we need a motion to adjourn public and then enter into, uh, executive session. Have a motion to adjourn?
Yes, I'd make that motion.
A second?
Uh, all right, roll call vote, uh, Branelini?
Yes.
Gates, yes. Uh, Hayes?
Yes.
Limblong?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Now I'll make a motion that we enter into executive session for number two as presented.
A second?
Uh, roll call vote, Branelini?
Yes.
Gates, yes. Hayes?
Yes.
Limblong?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Okay. We seem to make sure that, um,
Yeah, there's still a lot of people.
Yeah.